Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Norwood Planning Board meeting, February 12, 2024. There is a quorum present. David Homewood is present via Zoom, and all members are present, and the meeting is called to order. Tonight, there's some things on the agenda, and I'd like to follow this order. There are some public hearings, which will be opened up by reading the legal notice into the record. The proponent will have the opportunity to make presentations to the board. Once the board has concluded its discussion, there will be an opportunity for the public to comment. All members of the public in attendance who wish to ask a question or make a comment must wait to be recognized by the chair before speaking. Once recognized, be prepared to state your name and address for the record, and please speak loudly for everyone to hear. All questions and comments must be directed through the chair, and I will call upon board members and/or the applicant as needed to respond. A few quick reminders. I would like to -- there's likely going to be a good amount of commentary tonight, and I would just like to ensure that everybody who has something to say has the opportunity to speak. So if you could please keep your comments as brief as possible, and also, if people have spoken, we would like to hear from people who have yet to speak before, I guess, maybe people have another opportunity to offer comment. This evening's agenda, the first item is a site plan approval regarding property of 100 Moore Street. Tajmoo Realty LLC trustee of 100 Moore Street nominee trust is the applicant. This is regarding the addition of vehicle parts storage building, and I believe attorney Hearn is representing the applicant.
I'm along for the ride.
You're along for the ride? Okay. Then I guess we have an engineer.
Yes.
Good evening, sir. Sorry. Seeing you up at the podium.
No, 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 sir. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. My name is Matt Smith. I'm an engineer with Norwood Engineering Company. I'm here with my client, Mike Clemmie of Tajmoo Realty, and David Hearn, our project attorney. We're here to ask you to approve a site plan approval for a building for storage, and the building that we're proposing is 16,000 square feet with 25 parking spaces. If we could share screen with Alex, he has some plans that I'd like to put up on the board, and I'll make some -- I'll make my comments, and I hope you have questions.
Alex, are you able to share your screen?
Um, no. It says you're not allowed to share your screen on my thing.
We can fix that.
Okay.
And with me, that's an engineer, Alex Krappin, from my company at Norwood Engineering Company. We work together.
Alex, give that a try.
Looks like we have success. So the plan that I have on the board, it shows the existing site, and this is 100 Moore Street. It is a -- it's a building that currently has some medical use in there. I know years ago, I had an operation done, and so it's a medical building. And if you look in the upper right of that site, there's some existing woods area and pavement, and that's where we propose to build our building. Alex, if you can go to the next plan.
Can that be enlarged?
Yeah. Can we make it a little bit bigger? I know it's kind of --
Right.
And if people want to move closer to the screen, they're free to do so, too.
And as a reminder, anything should be directed through the chairman.
Okay. Thank you, sir. That was my mistake.
That's for everyone.
So the proposed building is in the upper right corner of this plan, and you can see that there's a -- what they have on there is the fire truck circulation plan. Again, I wish it were a little bit bigger to see. Alex, can you zoom up on the building itself? Great. He'll zoom up and pan over a little bit. Great. That's better, Alex. So we can see that we have -- the entrance to the building will be -- there'll be two garage doors. Alex, maybe you can move your cursor where the garage doors are. Great. And then there's going to be a parking field in that area, and then also some parking along the side. We're proposing 16,000 square feet and 25 parking spaces, and on the upper part of the screen, there are some trees, and I can show you another plan that has more detail, but I want everybody to get the general idea of what we're going to propose to build. That will be a detention basin up in that area, and it will be trees, aligned with trees with a 50-foot buffer, and then there'll be -- to below the building, we're proposing another infiltration area for the stormwater. And let me give you a little bit of highlights as to what we want to accomplish. The building will have a new sewer utility, new water. The stormwater management has been designed to meet stormwater standards. We have deep sump catch basins. We have two contact treatment units. We have 80% total suspended solid removal. We're recharging 0.6 inches of rainfall, which is the requirement for ace soils, and we're decreasing the runoff rates for all of the storms. We're proposing landscaping of 25 trees, 12 shrubs. And Alex, let's try the third plan, which is she-free, and I do share people's frustration that it's kind of small to see. This we can zoom up on. I think it would make sense if anybody has any questions on the utility layout. This has a lot of detail for the utility layout. But in summary, we're asking the board to approve this building, what, 16,000 square feet, 25 parking spaces. Mike Clemmie, my client from Tajmoo Realty, can answer any questions regarding the operation of the project and what's going to happen there. But at this point in time, I think it's best to open it up to any questions that the board has.
Okay. So with that, Ernie?
Thanks, Matt. I was up there, and I mean, it's pretty cut and dry. My question is on the detention basin.
Yes.
One, it seems like that's a high spot for some reason. It seems that's the high spot, and it shifts down towards Moore Street. You know, it goes, I don't know, north or south or whatever, but that seems to be the high spot.
Yes.
And so I'm just curious about that versus moving it to the lower, where it kind of meets Morse. And my other concern there, and it drops off behind the property.
Yes.
To the butters behind.
Yes.
And what kind of -- I don't have a scale ruler, but is there any concern on the butters as far as anything when you put a detention basin up there that you're going to get some leaching down through and out into their property? If you could just address that.
Yeah. We gave that a lot of thought. There are some neighbors towards the top of the plan, and that -- yes. And that basin will be lined with an impervious liner. So there will be no infiltration from that basin into the ground because we did not want groundwater to flow towards the neighbors. What will happen in that basin is that there's an outlet structure, so the water will fill up in the basin, and then it will go out slowly, and it goes out slowly through a pipe that will go along to the middle of the building, and then we're building another pipe across the parking lot below into the drainage system for the parking lot to the right of the building. So we did a lot of work to not have any infiltration in that area. All the infiltration will occur below the building. Alex, maybe you can give a -- move the cursor there. And that's the area where we did multiple soil tests on the site, and that's where we do have opportunity to do infiltration. We have ace soils there, so a good part of the site is going to be directed to that system, and that is the only system where we will infiltrate into the ground. We do have some concern about the neighbors, and we didn't think it would be a good idea to have any infiltration out of that detention.
So you're saying you basically put like a liner in there?
We put a liner. We put a rubber vinyl, polyvinyl liner. It prevents any water from seeping into the ground, and it just -- it affects -- it acts as a basin that will hold volume for a short amount of time, and there's a small outlet, and so the water will flow out slowly to slow down the rate of flow, but we're not infiltrating into the ground at that location.
Okay. Thank you. That was my only question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Any other questions from the board on this?
No.
No? Derek, do you have any questions?
No. Debbie has questions.
Oh, Debbie. So you see up there. Mrs. Homewood. Oh, you're muted.
All right. Don't you wish you could do that to me live?
Yes.
Is there -- hello, everybody? And is there any way we could use any of the parking spots that you're going to -- that the medical building is already blacktoped over for this unit, or are they separate lots?
It's possible. Let me talk to my --
You're also quiet.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Homewood. Sorry for the delay.
That's okay.
We'd be agreeable to getting rid of some of the parking spaces. Let me give you the backstory. The regulations tell us how many spaces we need to build, and we designed based on that requirement so we don't have to ask for any waivers. This is a small building. It's going to be storage. There will be some offices. Not going to be many people working there, and so as far as the operations of the building, and that's why I talked to Mike, we don't feel that we need 25 spaces for that building. We would be willing to build less. I think it would make sense to build less. Well, we would need a waiver from this board, and I believe we need a special permit, which would mean we would have to come back to you and ask for a special permit, and maybe I can ask Holly and -- I'm sorry, Mrs. Jones and Mrs. Dixon about the procedural aspect of that. But as far as the functionality of it, we'd be willing to get rid of -- build less spaces there. We don't think we need them, but the regulations say that we're supposed to build 25, and we didn't want to come here saying that we're not going to meet the regulations. But since we presented a plan that can meet the regulations, we're willing to eliminate some of those spaces, and I think what I would ask tonight is that you approve this plan with the understanding that we can come back with a plan with less spaces, more green space, and do whatever procedure needs to happen to get that approved.
Okay. I appreciate that, and Mr. Clemmie has been receptive to doing Pleasant Street and down by Rojo and the building he's got across the street, which is a testament to -- I think we're finally getting it. We need green space for both -- I go on. You know what I'm going to say. And we're over parked. We haven't addressed that yet in our regulations, and I think this would be -- you'd have less blacktop to do, and we would be covering less green. So I would make that motion if I -- do we have to do that, Sarah, or?
What I would recommend in this instance is a continuance to give us a chance to discuss what that appropriate amount of parking might be. I would want to take a look at the regulations and the specific uses that you're proposing and get a sense as to what might be an acceptable standard, and then return to the board with a recommendation to settle on.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I may.
I don't believe a special permit is needed.
Okay.
I believe the planning board has the authority to grant a waiver under the [inaudible].
Okay. If I may, Mr. Chair. We're all agreeable to that, but we really want to get an approval in hand. We've been through all the town departments. This meets all of the regulations. There are a lot of people involved in this. We'd like to get the approval in hand, but we also would like to have an agreement that we come back with less parking spaces.
So, Ernie, you had --
Mr. Chairman, I think what we could do is, if we find that, you know, if we find the board finds that we want to approve tonight, we could approve, and the applicant could come back, and we could handle it as a -- either we could handle it as a minor modification to the plan, and at that point, we could handle it, and we don't have to resubmit, re-notice everything else. A major modification would have to be -- we'd have to go through the whole thing again, but if we handle it as a minor modification, I think this would classify as a minor modification because it's actually for the better, for the benefit.
So with that, does anybody on the board have any questions?
We could do it that way, wouldn't we? And I would defer.
As a waiver. So you'd have to be voting specifically on granting the waiver request. I don't think that would be considered [inaudible].
You don't think that would be --
The intensity of the use is less. I get what you're saying, and that's typically what constitutes a minor modification, but in this case, since you'd have to be specifically granting a waiver. But again, this isn't a special -- this isn't a public hearing. This is not a special permit cycling review, so the administrative requirements of coming back to the board, you know, it's posting on the next agenda. Is that fair?
If I may.
Sure.
Yeah. Again, we're willing to -- we're happy to work with you. I think it's a good discussion. One of the problems I have is I have to design to the regulations. If I came in here and said, hey, the regulations say we need 25 spaces. I don't want to build 10. Everybody would say, this guy's trying to pull something. So -- and so this is good that we're trying to get -- no, but I mean, I understand that that's part of it. So we would -- this does comply with the regulations. We'd like to have approval for this tonight, but we'd also like to come back with a revised plan with less parking, and we could have some back and forth and hear some suggestions for the board as to how they would like that to look. So that would be our request.
Sorry. Joe?
Is there any particular number we're looking at at this time, or is that something we -- it's going to take time to?
Not much time, but not a lot.
Not a lot, okay.
So is there any motions?
Mr. Chairman, through you, if I could just talk to Mrs. Homewood.
Of course.
Debbie, so they want to -- I don't know if you're following along. You had -- your idea is good. It's valid, and I think we like it. The applicant would like an approval on the plan tonight, and then they would come back at a later time with a reduced parking, and they would do it procedurally correct.
Again, I think that's great. I lost the connection there for a minute. I apologize. I think that's -- but I -- all on the same page. And we can do that, Sarah, correct?
Yep.
I mean, there's always the risk that they won't come back with their parking plan. But yes, that's procedurally something.
I have to say, I haven't left Norwood for more than a week in 25 years, so.
I didn't know. We don't know where to find them.
Is there any motions on the floor?
I'll make a motion to approve, and we will entertain.
Can I just suggest that I was sort of leaning toward --
I forgot to ask the department if there's any thoughts here, and there are some, I think, some comments. Yes.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
If I may, I was actually leaning toward recommending a continuance as well because Norwood Engineering has worked very diligently to update the site plans. We did get site plan, revised site plans based on comments received last week back today that those departments haven't had time to review yet and confirm that all of their comments have been addressed. So I did recommend some conditions, just that essentially the administratively -- we received confirmation particularly from the fire department that their concerns have been addressed.
When you're ready to respond, Mr. Chair. Yep.
I'm going to get a site plan tonight.
Before we go, the conditions?
Thank you. We did receive some recent comments from the town departments. We had a meeting with all the town department heads and addressed many issues. The comments that were requested were minor. We were asked to change the gravel driveway to a system that has a --
Grasspaver.
-- impervious grasspaver, so we put those on there. The electric department, Norwood Light, wanted us to move the location of that access road so we could put what's called a push pole, which is one of those poles that are at an angle that helps to make the pole stronger. The fire department did have some comments, but it was more of a clarification. In element, you can put up the fire circulation plan, which we submitted, and this is not new data, but it's just clearer data. You can see the other plan has a lot of information on it. This plan shows the proposed parking and how a fire truck can make it through the site with our design, and I looked at that comment from the fire department today, and they weren't really saying -- I don't believe it says that there was a problem. It says that the truck will have to go close to some spaces, but it was unclear which spaces were going to be -- were the existing spaces or the proposed spaces. So this shows the proposed spaces, and it does comply. And I will say, from our standpoint, we did get those comments relatively recently, relatively late, so I would ask that we -- that you approve tonight under the condition that we get satisfactory comments from.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Debbie, one second. I'm sorry. Sarah had a comment.
Yeah. So in this case, you could consider a condition of approval that requires the applicant to provide a final copy of the site plan that addresses the outstanding comments made by the town engineer and the fire department as documented in the memos that were provided to you in your packets.
All right.
Alternatively, I might also suggest, if you are interested in continuing, some of the issues with the turning radius for the fire trucks could be resolved by removing some parking spaces.
That's what I was thinking. Well, that could go away.
That's what Debbie is saying.
That's really at the discretion of the board, but those are, as I see it, two viable options for you to consider.
Thank you. Debbie, what were you going to offer?
That's what I was going to say. At the time, if I were there, that the fire truck moved around. And conservation, we have a -- I guess, Mr. Clemmie implicitly, but do we have a landscape plan? On this, I printed it, but it's so small.
Yes, there is.
Why conservation's questions?
Yes. It's by -- yep. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I wasn't ready to.
Go ahead.
Yeah. We -- there is a landscape plan by Kim Turner of KD Turner Landscaping Designs dated 1/21/24. I would like to address Sarah's comments and just let the board know that those comments by the town department are incorporated in the plans that you're looking at. So I would say the condition is you approve these plans, but subject to have the department heads write a letter saying that they concur that this meets their -- it is -- we're not asking them -- we're not asking you to approve a plan that doesn't have the items that they asked for. The plan that you have showed the items that they asked for.
Okay. So there technically was a motion on the floor, but I don't know if you're withdrawing that or.
Withdrawn that.
All right. So that motion is withdrawn. Is there any other commentary or questions from the board, or does anybody have a motion to make?
No. May I comment?
Debbie, yes.
I'm -- I want to -- I ask Sarah again, but I wouldn't be comfortable voting for with conditions, and I get that they want to get rolling, and I'm doing all this paperwork for all the boards. They seem to be minor, but I would like to have them in as conditions, and I know they're in there, Matt. I just -- I can't see them because they're so small. So if we can get through the specifics and the fire department, if we rearrange the parking spots, that'll change that a little. Correct, Sarah?
It could.
It could.
I'd like to get --
Sure.
Mrs. Homewood, we believe that the plan that we presented does comply with the fire department regulations. I think that the fire department regulation said that it appears it's a little bit too close, and they weren't sure what they were looking at because the plan, to my, you know, element, was a little bit too complicated. So I don't think there is a problem with the circulation. Certainly, less spaces will make the circulation better, but I believe that the fire department looks at this plan, they will concur that it complies, and we would ask that the condition that the department heads, such as the fire department and the town engineer, write letters to you saying that this plan is in compliance with what they requested.
Okay.
Okay. I just going by, I talked to Lynn at 3:30, and she said we still had an outstanding from the fire department, not Mike Ryan. Not Mark Ryan, but the fire department. So I'm just checking to try to make sure I don't miss anything.
Ernie, did you have a comment?
And if the fire department is not satisfied and is unwilling to provide that letter, then we're right back where, you know, where we started. We come back here, and we talk about plan revisions again.
So what's your suggestion?
If the fire department's still unsatisfied with the plan as the board approves it tonight, then you would have to come back before the board.
We could approve it with the conditions the fire department asked.
I'm saying, I'm saying, I think the -- I'm sorry, Mrs. Homewood. My mistake.
Yeah?
No, please, I'm listening. My mistake. I was speaking when you were speaking.
Which one of us is talking?
The floor is yours, Debbie.
Okay. Just what Sarah said. I would be in favor of approving with conditions of the fire department, and they're looking at it, and that would be my suggestion.
Okay. And do you have any final comment?
You're pointing at me?
Ernie, you had -- no. Ernie, you had something to say.
I just -- I do kind of agree. I agree with Debbie. I think that the plan is pretty solid, with the exception of very few outstanding issues, and I think we could approve. There's nothing really major. I'm looking on this letter from Norwood Engineering dated February 8th, which addresses a considerable amount of town department head comments, and I think the few outstanding ones are such in nature that, as Sarah said with a letter, it would handle it. There's nothing here that needs for the sample to come back.
Okay.
I mean, to address, in my opinion, anyway.
So are there any motions?
Debbie, did you make that motion?
She never --
No, well, Alex, you do it. You're much better at that than I am.
All right. If you're ready for one, Mr. Chairman, I'll --
I most certainly.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the plan as shown with the condition that any outstanding issues, and there are just a few, are resolved through the department heads to a letter to the planning department, saying that they are taken care of.
Sutel.
Does that make sense?
It does. Is there a second?
Second?
All right. There's a motion, a second, I believe, because Debbie's away. We have to do a roll call.
Second.
Okay. So, Mr. Rob?
Rob Amber, aye.
Brian Hashi, aye.
Joe Sheen, aye.
Harry Kaczakowski, aye.
Yeah. Debbie Homewood, yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you. All right.
You do know I got where to find you, right?
All right.
I went to school here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Board.
Thank you.
Now you know him.
Okay.
You didn't get held up for more trees or anything. Yeah.
But then you got more green for much happier fun.
Yes, exactly. Yes.
Mr. Clemmie loves green.
Yes. We all. Thank you again. Thank you very much.
Okay. So the next item on tonight's agenda are a series of public hearings regarding town meeting warrant articles and proposed zoning changes. I can note, I assure you, that they are available online if people haven't had a chance to review them, and that's at www.norwood review them, and that's at www.nordwoodma.gov backslash departments, backslash planning and economic development, backslash proposed zoning amendments. The first of these proposed zoning amendments that we will be discussing tonight is.
Could I, could I request that we take these out of order as they're posted?
Out of order, you want to do the.
The accessory dwelling units, can we do that one last?
Sure. Thank you, perfect time. So the first, are we doing, otherwise in the same order, or are we going to jump?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first on our augmented order this evening will be the proposed zoning amendments regarding kennels, and I believe that.
I don't know if we have a motion for that.
Do we?
I got it right here.
It's out here, Rob's going to.
Oh, you got it, go ahead.
Yeah. In accordance with the requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, notice is hereby given that the town of Norwood Planning Board will hold a public hearing on February 12, 2024, at 7:00 PM at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, or via remote participation in Google Meet. The purpose of the public hearing is to accept public comments on draft zoning bylaw amendments to Section 3, Table of Use Regulations, Subsection F, Service Establishments and Section 11 Definition. The proposed amendments will prohibit commercial kennels in the residential zoning districts and provide new defined terms related to kennels. Draft zoning bylaw amendments are in file in the planning department at Town Hall and may be reviewed during normal business hours by emailing comdev@norwoodmass.gov or viewed on the planning board's webpage located at www.nordwoodmass.gov. Okay.
All right, hearing notice having been read into the record, it is the planning department representation on this particular proposed amendment. Thank you.
So just a brief description for those who are attending and perhaps learning about each of these articles for the first time. This first zoning article is regarding the use of commercial kennels within residential districts. So currently, the zoning bylaw does not contain definitions for commercial kennels or personal kennels, and this article would insert definitions of a commercial boarding or training kennel, a commercial breeder kennel, and a personal kennel. And then it would also, in the use table, establish that commercial kennels would not be permitted use in the single-family residential districts. It would also make a change that it would be allowed by special permit by the Board of Appeals in the manufacturing district. The definitions for each of those three categories, the commercial kennel, the commercial breeder kennel, or the personal kennel, are consistent with the same definitions that are utilized in Mass General Law, which is helpful to note just because the Health Department also kind of enforces under their own umbrella regulations about these kennels. So this change is really designed to bring some consistency in enforcement in our two various departments that deal with these things, and then also create some extra protections for the residential districts.
Great, thank you. Leave now, we will just move to some questions or comments from the board before speaking to the public. Does anybody from the board have any comments or concerns?
No, I think it cleans it up. I think that the zoning enforcement officer and the building inspector are also on board with this.
Ian?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Homewood has a comment.
Is this, this is new that it's by special permit or an add-on, not new, correct, Sarah?
So the text that you have is what was submitted by this board to the Board of Selectmen, and that's the basis of the public hearing this evening?
Okay, that was new from our meeting two weeks ago, correct?
So, no, that was included two weeks ago.
Okay, so there being no comments or questions from the board, we'll open the hearing to the public for comment. Please be reminded that if anybody wishes to speak, just raise your hand and provide your name and address. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about the proposed bylaw amendment with regard to kennels? Yes?
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Tony Esco, District 5, on the end of Cross Street. I think we do have some sort of doggy daycare stuff at the end of my street. I'm not sure how large or small. But are they inspected routinely or certificateed or so? Because they can, we have manufacturing at the end of our street, and it's a butt's residential, so I just want to know about the climate, just the hygiene, the protections, the public health aspect.
There's applicable regulations, and the town has.
Board of Health.
Board of Health. There are enforcement mechanisms with regard to the operation of these kennels, for sure.
Okay, ma'am, yeah, another question?
Carol McClay, District 8. I'm sorry, could you, I'll just say your address.
Address.
506 Bahama Drive.
Okay.
The personal kennels, are they allowed in single-family districts?
Oh, yeah, of course. Yeah.
They are in the zoning as written, and they are in the zoning as it was considered by the planning board two weeks ago. So the language that has been submitted to the selectmen for placement on the warrant does not have a use category for personal kennels. I will say that the planning board, a couple of weeks ago, when it was preparing this language, did discuss the issue about personal kennels a fair amount. And Ms. Homewood, in particular, was asking if the board might consider some language that would address personal kennels in those single-family residential neighborhoods. When I reviewed this language with town council, within the last week, town council did recommend, based on his experiences with similar zoning in other towns where he works, did recommend that the planning board at its hearing tonight consider inserting a line in the use table for personal kennels that would create personal kennels to be available by special permit only in those single-family residential neighborhoods. I did draft that language after my discussions both with town council, Attorney DeLuca, and with Ms. Homewood, and included it in your packet with the changes in red, so you can see what those are. That would further increase, I think, some protections for the residential abutters to a personal kennel, which is, in the definitions, really only distinct from a commercial kennel and how dogs particularly are bred and sold. A commercial kennel being you sell into pet stores and that sort of commercial entity, whereas personal kennels being for personal sale, if that makes sense.
Sure. Thank you. Are there any, oh.
Just that the permitting authority would be the Board of Appeals and.
So are there any other questions from the public with regard to the proposed, oh, Tony, you have a question?
Mr. Chairman, David Hearn of 98th Borough, I'm not speaking on behalf of anybody, just as a town resident and ultimately one who will be voting on this at town meeting. I think the recommendation that Ms. Dixon just mentioned about adding some line item somewhere, a personal kennel, makes sense, because otherwise we're putting definitions in that aren't mentioned anywhere in the bylaw. There's no point in putting definitions in, other than it creates confusion. And I was going to ask the same thing when I was looking at this. We don't have anything called commercial breeder kennel in our bylaw, right now, that I could find, unless I've missed something. So why do we have a definition of it? But if we think it's important, just as the recommendation is to add something that defines a personal kennel, which means anybody who has more than four dogs, believe me, one is enough in our house. But, you know, that maybe we should add something to personal kennel, and if we have a reason to define commercial breeder kennel, maybe should be a line item for that also. So there's no doubt. Otherwise, there's no point in having a definition that doesn't apply to our bylaw.
Okay. Another comment? Okay, yes.
I was just wondering if it's unlimited to the number of dogs in a personal kennel?
There.
So as originally proposed, the language said a pack or collection of more than four dogs, three months old or older, owned and kept by single ownership. Again, as a result of my conversations with Ms. Homewood and town council, a change from four to three was included in the revisions that I submitted to you for your consideration and discussion this evening.
Okay. Any other comments from the public, questions with regard to the zoning amendment, personal kennels? Okay, with that, we take a vote to close the public hearing? Oh, online, I'm sorry, oh, Ernie, there are questions.
Just, I'd like to discuss with Sarah with Mr. Hearn's comment about, you know, being more definitive on the commercial kennel, if it's.
So they.
And the second part, I'm sorry, Sarah, the second part of this would be, that these would be, because this has already been submitted for the selectmen to review and put on the warrant, that these changes, when we make our recommendation at town meeting, would be brought up at that time, correct? That's a procedural, go on the back, that's a procedural.
So you could make a request this evening, if you voted during your public hearing on these articles. If you agreed on a set of amendments and submitted your request to the Board of Selectmen in advance of their closing the warrant, they could put that amended language on the warrant. If, say, you were to continue tonight's public hearing on this until after they closed the warrant, then yes, procedurally, the process would be to take this up as a floor amendment at town meeting.
And then, going back to the first, Mr. Hearn's comment about putting a line in.
The use table, right now, includes a line for commercial kennel, animal, or veterinary hospital.
So.
And so it doesn't specifically address commercial breeder kennel or commercial boarding or training kennel. It doesn't further specify each of those two, but it does address commercial kennel, which, were I the building commissioner, which I'm not, but if I were in that position, I would interpret that to cover both of those definitions, both being different types of commercial kennels. What the use table does not include is a line item for personal kennel, which in no way could be construed as a commercial kennel, and that was the suggestion for adding that line.
Could we just add on that use table, where it says commercial kennel, could we put commercial kennel breeding or boarding? And that would clarify, Mr. Hearn, would that clarify that? If we, if we just changed on the use table, that line that's already in insistence for a commercial kennel? I think that may clear it up a little bit, breeder or, breeder or border.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just looking at somebody, a lot of time reading these things, trying to figure out what they mean, just to say commercial kennel. Somebody might come in someday and say, well, commercial kennel, but not a commercial breeder kennel, or not a commercial boarding and training.
Right.
So why don't you, either that or, under the definition of commercial kennel, include whether it is used for boarding and training or for breeding, because those are two separate activities. People who take dogs in for boarding or for training, and others who are breeders by profession. Some way to include them, but not have it, because somebody might come in and say, well, you just said commercial kennel, you never said a commercial breeder kennel. And I think just the more there gives the building commissioner more support for the interpretations he has to make.
Point taken.
What you think would be the more appropriate way, Sarah? Do you have any thought on that?
I think both achieve the same end. I think the more simple way of going about that would be to do as you suggested and cite the different types of commercial kennels right there in the use, the use table.
That would be just to add in a few words.
And then just kind of going back to the intention of this, you know, this is really intended to protect, you know, residential abutters to these types of establishments. And I think that by doing that, you know, you're consistently maintaining that the impact, whether it's for breeding or for boarding and training, the impact of having a large volume of dogs in a single location would have some potentially negative impacts on residential abutters. So I think either way, the intention here is honored. It just simply makes it a little bit more specific and clearer, easier for the building commissioner to interpret.
I would support that part to be added. And the other last question, you said on the, through town council, four dogs to three dogs? Does that mean that if I'm a homeowner, the maximum dog allowed, I can only have three dogs? Even though I'm not breeding, I'm not selling?
Well, before you go to get a special permit for a.
Before you go.
Before you would require a special permit.
So if I wanted a fourth dog, I would need, even just for a pet, I need a special permit for a fourth dog? And that would go, wouldn't that be Board of Health would be the granting authority on that? No?
No, so this would be land use, so as.
Land use would come.
Set forward, it would be in the, the zoning Board of Appeals typically handles those types of.
All right.
Special permit requests.
Okay, so we're all clear on that?
Four, four dogs is consistent with the state standard. We have the ability to kind of go above and beyond. So the Health Department still has to regulate standards for personal kennels at four dogs or more.
May I? May I? I need a bell.
Sorry, Debbie has a comment? She froze.
Ray?
Yes, she froze for a moment. Sure, Mrs. Homewood.
Sarah, I appreciate your work on that, and I didn't, Henry did get involved in it, and I understand that, you know, that if I have four dogs, so I have to go get a special permit. I think what we talked about, and I really, I really appreciate you, you know, getting in front of that, Sarah, and yes, you got to get to get something, but I think it's important for the neighbors and the animals. So thank you. Can I turn on again?
Nope, you're there. All right, so are there any other further comments or questions from the board or from the public on this particular zoning amendment? Okay, with that, do we take a motion to close the public hearing on this?
Make a motion to close public hearing?
Second. All right, roll call vote. Mr. Amber.
Rob Amber, aye.
Brian Heskey, aye.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
Arty Patcukowski, aye.
Debbie Homewood, yes.
And as far as action on the amendment, I mean, the zoning amendment, would you do that now, or do you do it collectively at the end?
I'll do it now.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the planning board recommends to town meeting approval of this bylaw change with the added word change from commercial kennel to add the words breeder and border, and the additional line item that specifies personal kennel added to the use tables.
As well as the change to the definition of personal kennel.
And as also the definitions, the changing of the definition with those changes.
Second. There being a motion, a second, roll call vote. Mr. Amber.
Rob Amber, aye.
Brian Heskey, aye.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
Arty Patcukowski, aye.
Debbie Homewood and all the animals, aye.
Okay. So the next item on our agenda tonight is regarding a change in the bylaw as it pertains to notice on zoning amendments. So, Mr. Clerk, could please?
I got it right here.
Oh, yeah, if you please read the public hearing notice in the record.
In accordance with the requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, notice is hereby given that the town and Norwood Planning Board will hold a public hearing on February 12, 2024, at 7:00 PM at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, or via remote participation on Google Meet. The purpose of the public hearing is to accept public comments on the draft zoning bylaw amendment to Section 1.5.2. The proposed amendments will establish procedures for public notice of zoning amendments by the planning board to affected parties. The draft zoning bylaw amendments are on file in the planning department at Town Hall and may be reviewed during normal business hours, or by emailing something at norwoodmass.gov, or viewed on the planning board's webpage located at www.nordwoodma.gov backslash.
Okay, Sarah, which, Debbie?
So this next article regards notice of public hearings on zoning amendments, or broadly what it is that we're doing tonight. State law requires that the planning board hold a public hearing in advance of town meeting for any article that's on the warrant at town meeting. And typically, if the zoning article concerns, you know, a certain portion of land, we are obligated under state law to provide notice of that by posting an agenda and following all of our normal open meeting law requirements. There is a section that's existing in our zoning bylaw, Section 1.5.2, that talks about a procedure for providing more specific notice of this hearing to affected parties. The zoning bylaw currently lacks a lot of specificity on who is an interested party, and it also sets a limit on, you know, at what point is that group of interested parties so large that it's not feasible to notify all of. that large that it's not feasible to notify all of them. The changes that are being proposed here give some specificity to what exactly is an interested party, and it lifts that cap. Essentially, the goal here is to try to increase transparency, provide more notice to people who might be impacted by zoning bylaw changes, and to also the town meeting members who represent the district that contains potentially affected zoning. So in this case, what it does is it establishes that our, our cap is 200 parties. So again, if it's over 200 parties on this list, you know, at some point, you'd be notifying everybody in town. We think about like the BPH zoning district was all of Route 1. That would have been hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people that would have been affected, and those mailings are unwieldy and expensive. But it does lift from 50 to 200, which is significant. And then it also identifies that owners of affected property and their direct abutters are considered the interested parties that would receive a mailing about this. So the planning department did, even though this has not been changed by town meeting yet, did follow this procedure for this round of zoning amendments. And so, a lot of folks probably received hearing notices about the MBTA Communities zoning article if they are within that affected area or in a abut to that affected area, just as an example of the kind of notice we're talking about.
Great. So before we speak to the public, anybody in the board have any final questions or thoughts?
I do.
Oh, Mrs. Homwood?
I did get three calls from three different people that appreciated getting the mailing and had never been mailed anything before, and I think it's long overdue. So, thank you for, ladies, for all your work.
Okay, thank you. So now we will open the hearing to the public for comment. If anybody has any questions or concerns, please raise your hand, stand, and name an address, please.
Anne Haley, 187 Nickel Street. I'm a town meeting member and have been frustrated in the past because we hadn't been notified about different things going on in the town. So I appreciate the work, the way I understand it, we'll be receiving information when things come to the board. But I didn't hear anybody say anything about emails. And as town meeting members, we were asked to give our email today, asked to give our email. So that would cut down on cost and whatever, if you were allowed to use emails.
Sarah, do you wish to comment?
Yeah, I apologize. I neglected to mention that part of the proposed changes. In addition to interested parties being, you know, within the proposed zone or parcel that is the subject of the change, and those direct abutters. Town meeting members representing the district where that affected property is located would receive an email with the hearing notice, and that list would be certified by the town clerk using the official list of town meeting member emails. Just as a way to balance the cost of providing that notice, since we do have town meeting email addresses.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments from the public with regard to this particular proposed zoning amendment, or amendment to the bylaw? Oh, there's one question over there.
Did I just hear you say it's only town meeting members?
I'm sorry, just name an address, please, if you could.
I'm sorry?
Name an address, please.
Mary Coughlin, 1 Lennox Street.
Sure, and what's the question?
Yes, did I just hear you say it's only going to be town meeting members that's going to receive a lot of this information?
No, just the email. So the email, the question was, does a town meeting member receive notification if something's occurring within their district? And Sarah clarified that the proposed change does permit for that. So yes, that's all, that's just an email to the town meeting member in addition to the mailing within a certain circumference as defined in this new bylaw or proposed. Okay, any other questions from the public or comments on this particular one? Okay. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Is anybody online waiting to speak to this? Doesn't appear so.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second. Okay, roll call vote. Rob Bamber, aye.
Brian Heskey, aye.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
Ernie Pachakowski, aye.
Debbie Homwood, yes.
Okay. Any motions with regard to moving this one forward?
Motion to approve. Recommend and send this to the town meeting.
Second.
Motion to second. Roll call?
Rob Bamber, aye.
Brian Heskey, aye.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
Ernie Pachakowski, aye.
Debbie Homwood, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The next matter on tonight's agenda is another proposed zoning change. This one regards the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District. What is referred to as the MCMOD. Mr. Clerk, do you have the hearing notice to read in the record?
Yeah, I do. In accordance with requirements of Mass. General Law, 48, Section 5, notices hereby given at the Norwood Planning Board will hold a public hearing on February 12, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, or via remote participation on Google Meet. The purpose of the public hearing is to accept public comments on the draft zoning bylaw amendment to Section 2 districts, Section 3 table of use regulations, Section 4.1.1 table of dimensional requirements, and insert a new 9.5 MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District. The proposed amendments will create a new MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District known as NC, the MCMOD, designed to comply with the regulations of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 3A, known as the MBTA Communities Act. This new regulation would create districts allowing multifamily housing to be permitted by right subject to a series of proposed dimensional environmental regulations. The draft zoning bylaw amendments are on file in the planning department at the Town Hall and may be reviewed during normal business hours by emailing carndelivery@norwoodma.gov or viewed at the planning board's website at www.norwoodma.gov backslash. That's it.
Okay, thank you. So, Sarah, are you just the planning?
We do.
Do you have a presentation?
I'm trying to figure out the best way to get the presentation on the screen.
Okay.
So everyone can see it. I think you share us if people don't want to. All right, thanks for your patience. All right, thank you. I recognize that a lot of folks may be new to the MBTA Communities law. Some of you I know have attended some of the public engagement events, or some of you are task force members. So apologies if some of this is information that you've heard already, but for those of you who are new to this, I want to make sure you have a good understanding of what the new law is, what the proposed zoning hopes to accomplish, and how we got to this point. The planning board about 18 months ago established an MBTA Communities Task Force, which was a small group of residents, both representing other boards or as residents at large, to tackle this assignment of how to come into compliance with a new state law that required us to create a zoning district where multifamily housing could be permitted by right within a certain distance from our public transit stations. So this was our, our task force that met regularly for about our part of over a year and brought their recommendations to the board to help kind of formulate the bylaw that's now before a town meeting for approval. Briefly, the new Section 3A law was passed by the state legislature a few years ago, and it requires 177 communities like ours that have public transit access points within or adjacent to their communities. So that's subway, it's commuter rail, it's communities that are next to commuter rail station communities or small towns in those areas. We are a commuter rail community. We had to create a zone which was a minimum allowance of 15 units per acre by right. That's a word we usually call density. It's a measure of how many units can be placed on a certain area. The zone had to be of reasonable size, so for Norwood, that's 50 acres. It could not have any age restrictions. It had to be housing that's suitable for families. And a certain percentage of it, in our case, 90%, had to be located within a half mile of a train station. 3A was passed in large part as a response to the housing crisis that our state and many other states in the Northeast find themselves in. Growing and maintaining a healthy and sustainable community requires housing options at a variety of scales and a wide range of price points. And increasingly, in Massachusetts especially, that has not been the reality for anybody who's looking to upsize, downsize, right-size, look for more affordable housing, or look for housing, you know, at the beginning of their adulthood. If you look at housing production rates, there have been decades of underproduction of housing. Massachusetts is one of the lowest-producing states in the country of housing, which drives up home prices. And we've seen that people across the board, whether it's young families, seniors, you know, recent college grads, are getting pushed out of the state, posing a threat to our economy and just changing the way our communities feel as people can't afford to stay or can't afford to, to come back. So the task force began this process knowing, you know, understanding that this is a law that Norwood has to come into compliance with. It started by submitting an action plan to the state saying, "Yep, we intend to, you know, go through a process to figure out how to come into compliance with this." It really formed the basis of this project around public engagement. So it started with some education, making sure that we could discuss with the community a little bit more about what this was, why we were, you know, asking the questions we were, and what our plan was going forward. And really kind of engaging the community in a discussion about what those needs are. The district was designed from start to finish based on feedback we received from the public. So you can see here, there was a wide range of public education and really like learning events. The goal of these efforts, including a survey, community events, workshops, public presentations, and small group discussions, was really to learn about residents, learn from residents about their preferences and priorities for future multifamily housing here in Norwood. It's always been important to the planning board and to staff that the task force not only educate residents on zoning and what this assignment was, but also engage them on these specific questions to formulate this, this final district. We drafted some bylaw amendments, and we are right here at this final step, town meeting final approval. The majority of our public engagement events were small group discussion events where attendees were divided into small groups and led through a series of discussion prompts. I see many of these faces here. A lot of you attended those groups. We had over 70 people that participated in these discussion sessions. Groups talked about the parts of Norwood that they love, housing needs that they felt were unmet in the community, and shared their stories about their personal experiences with housing in Norwood, good bed and everything in between. We had participants represented at all walks of life, longtime residents, newcomers, seniors, small business owners, property owners, renters, owners, and more. And most people had lived in a variety of different housing types, either here in Norwood or elsewhere. Every participant had their own unique stories and views, and everyone was valid and was heard. But there were some themes of consensus that emerged. The, everybody had very deep and meaningful concerns about Norwood's future. People talked a lot about their worries about traffic, worries about loss of open space, change of neighborhood character, and more. We heard a lot of folks that were worried about young people in town, with a lot expressing some sadness that people could no longer afford to return here as adults. Most people expressed a really strong interest in staying in Norwood, especially as they age. We did hear a lot of worry that their current housing might be too large or unaffordable as time went on. And lots of people really just kind of felt grateful that they never really had to think about some of these issues and wondered, "If I were to have to move to Norwood today, would I be able to afford to?" We heard that a lot. We also had a survey. Over 100 survey responses were logged. It wasn't a representative sample of everybody who lives in Norwood, and it wasn't intended to be. It was really intended to be a tool to make sure that we expanded access to the public and make sure that as many people as possible had the opportunity to make their voices heard and their views known. Diversifying that outreach was important to us. So we did receive, I think, a really good, a good response. Most people here that responded to our survey were homeowners, which is greater than the general population and reported living in a single-family home, which is also higher than the actual population of Norwood. But it was a fairly diverse group. There were, again, you know, some consistent themes. Respondents agreed that Norwood doesn't have enough affordable housing. When we asked folks, you know, where they would support seeing some increased housing density, most people preferred to see increased housing density in the areas around the three train stations, with Route 1 being a runner-up. So through the survey and the focus groups, some themes definitely emerged. Lots of love for Norwood, right? That Norwood love was really strong. People's lists about what they love about this town were, were really long. People loved the affordable taxes, public services, like the senior center and the library, walkability, our vibrant downtown, inexpensive municipal electric and broadband, diversity, and a strong sense of community in the neighborhoods. People agreed that in a perfect Norwood, housing options would include increased options for seniors and people with disabilities, as well as more affordable units across the board. A priority for walkable housing in complete neighborhoods emerged, and there was support for green space and sustainable buildings when possible. Participants were also interested in smaller living options, like in-law style units or accessory dwelling units. There was a lot of support for the Norwood Housing Authority and the great work that they do in our community for seniors and the disabled, and providing deeply affordable housing. So public feedback has been clear that the multifamily housing uses should be near transit, commercial uses, and pedestrian-friendly areas. People felt really strongly that the single-family neighborhoods should remain as they currently are. That was a theme. The task force identified districts within those half-mile zones that contain parcels that are currently mostly zone-manufacturing, but otherwise near less compatible uses, like residential. Again, like a factory right next to a single-family home. They were looking at those manufacturing parcels. They also looked at parcels that were good candidates for redevelopment with vacant or underutilized land. And then they also looked at parcels that are currently used as multifamily housing today. The proposed district locations were designed to encourage some reinvestment in key areas of town in ways that are more compatible with the existing land uses that increase tax revenue for the town and would support the local economy by creating more opportunities for vibrant neighborhoods and lots of walkability to jobs and small businesses. The new zoning overlay district that materialized as a result of all of this public feedback is called the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District, or McMod, which is fun. It's to have three sub-districts, each with a distinct dimensional requirement. Norwood Central, Norwood Depot, and Windsor Gardens. And the dimensional requirements for each would vary depending on the neighborhood and kind of the unique and distinct nature of each one. This proposal was designed really to be a thoughtful middle-of-the-road proposal here, to meet the state's requirements while keeping strong dimensional controls that should deliver some attractive and compatible buildings with more open space than maybe some other recent multifamily housing developments. So just to kind of talk a little bit about the, the high points of the proposed zoning. And just kind of to tie back to the, the public input that kind of generated the bylaw. So, a chief concern we heard was about housing supply. There's not enough housing for renters or owners at any size or price. So in response... So in response, the task force and the planning board created draft zoning that would allow for housing redevelopment that's actually buildable in the local market without unreasonable or competing requirements. Sometimes you see that with zoning. There are so many layers of complicated and competing requirements that the end result, however well-intentioned, is not something that results in units that can actually be constructed or built, which doesn't solve this need of a housing shortage. Affordability. We heard that even the affordable housing in Norwood is increasingly out of reach for Norwood residents, and that's if you can even find it, because there's not enough. So the response here, again, the bylaw requires affordable units as a percentage of redevelopment. So ten percent of smaller buildings that have between eight and fifteen units must be set aside as affordable to income-qualified households. And sixteen units or more, those developments require twenty percent to be set aside. It also allows for a building height bonus if a developer elects to restrict an additional five percent at a lower income threshold. So more deeply affordable units would be provided. That's notable because Norwood currently doesn't have any inclusionary zoning requirements at that income band. So this would be creating more deeply affordable housing in addition to more affordable housing overall. Traffic, right? Traffic is always a concern. It's already a problem. The response here was that we increased the amount of the zoning district that was placed near the train stations. It's a hundred percent within a half mile of the train, and the parcels that are most likely to be redeveloped are usually much closer than that. That's designed to do a few things. One is replace commercial traffic. Again, since much of this land was zoned as manufacturing and is currently being used that way, it would replace commercial traffic of things like tractor-trailers or semis delivering materials and replace it with, you know, residential traffic that might be a little bit more compatible with the neighborhood. Also, most significantly, it's designed to attract more residents that are less car-dependent through reduced parking requirements, mandatory bicycle storage, and the location of the district itself. This is really designed to attract folks maybe who are not as tied to their cars and less likely to be driving on and off of their property every day to go to work or access goods and services. The selection here was really strategic about making sure that people had access to the places where they work or train to get to the place where they work, goods, services, anything that they might need. They would be more likely to be able to do that by walking or riding their bike or rolling. Accessibility was another big thing we heard from our participants in the small group discussions and on the survey. Housing stock in Norwood, as most of you know, it's mostly older, okay? We don't have a lot of new housing developments and subdivisions. Older buildings tend to be more accessible. They're walk-ups, or they have lots of stairs. There are not as many options for seniors and people that have mobility concerns. So the response here was to take advantage of an opportunity to narrow this accessibility gap. Districts were selected in areas where an increased building height at three stories or more would be appropriate and consistent with what's already built. That's significant because according to building code and AAB requirements, new construction at three stories or above usually has to require an elevator and has a requirement that a certain percentage of units be accessible, fully accessible units. The zoning also allows for mixed use, and that's significant because over time, that creates more accessible vibrant neighborhoods that have goods, jobs, and services within easier reach for all residents. And we heard from people who don't drive that that's really important to them, and in part, one of the reasons that they like their current housing in Norwood. Scale-to-neighborhood was another theme. We have a strong incentive to kind of preserve the existing single-family neighborhoods that we already have here in Norwood. Norwood does have a lot of existing multifamily housing, and so the response is that the new zoning is really integrated into those neighborhoods that are most compatible with multifamily housing and is scaled to match. None of the single-family districts have any zoning changes here. Open space. We heard Norwood is mostly built-out, and it is. We want to preserve as much green space as we can. The district selection for this focused on industrial and manufacturing land, which is actually an opportunity to increase the amount of green and open space available and reduce the amount of paved surfaces. The bylaw requires between ten and twenty percent open space and offers bonuses for projects that offer forty percent or more. The idea being build-up and not out, take advantage of those existing structures and spaces without having to encroach into areas that are forested or otherwise still green in Norwood. Sustainability was a theme and a concern. A strong desire was shown to plan for a more resilient Norwood and protect the environment. So the proposed bylaw incorporates sustainable design principles to promote walkability, energy efficiency, green space, stormwater management, and more. Design requirements include requirements for bike storage, pedestrian access to the street, sidewalk access, open space. The bylaw also allows for mixed use, which promotes walkable neighborhoods and sustainable growth. And it also offers a building height bonus for properties that go above and beyond stormwater management principles with things like solar, rooftop green space, and that sort of thing. So just to touch on some frequently asked questions, since I've heard a lot of them in the last few months engaging with the public on this, just a few things that I kind of wanted to bring up before we jump into questions and comments. Will all the land in this area be redeveloped as multifamily housing? And when do all those new units need to be built? No, it will not all be developed as multifamily housing. The law does not regulate housing at all. It is about capacity. It's about zoning. It's about the rules that regulate what uses can exist where and what types of things can be built, and when it is built, you know, what it looks like, how tall it can be, and all of that. But it's not a construction requirement, and it does not require any number of units to actually be constructed afterwards. It also specifically doesn't regulate any housing type. So another question is, will they all be rentals? Will any be condos? The law doesn't specify housing type, and so neither does this bylaw. That's really up to the market to decide what there's a demand for. Another question is, looking at what's proposed, it's seventy-eight acres, and we only had to do fifty. Why aren't we just doing the bare minimum to comply? To that, you know, I would say compliance is an equation. If you look at the metrics that we have to comply with, fifty acres at least, fifteen units per acre density, unit capacity of over two thousand units. To comply with all of those, Norwood's district has to exceed minimums in at least one area to be compliant as a whole. It's an equation. Norwood's proposal achieves the required unit capacity by spreading those required unit densities over a larger area, which is a complicated concept and one that is a hard thing to understand. I'd like to think of unit capacity as like a blob of clay, right? The state assigned us a fixed number of units that we would have to hypothetically zone for. It's based on the percentage of our overall housing stuff. And we can flex it over an area of land as tall or wide as we want. That's how we control the density in ways that benefit our own priorities as a community. So for example, if green space was important to us, then we would need more acreage, right? If short building heights was a really big priority to us, then we would need more acreage in our district. If we wanted taller buildings, then we would need less acres to achieve that unit capacity. If we required less parking, same thing, less acreage to achieve those same number of potential housing minutes. Those resulting numbers aren't really a measure of us aiming for dramatically more development than is required. It's just an expression of the priorities that were identified in this process and kind of figuring out how to make this district work in a way that meets our needs. So the question last that I would talk about is, how much redevelopment can we realistically expect us to build and when? That unit capacity number is over two thousand, which is a scary number to think about, right? Where are we going to put two thousand additional units of housing? And that's important. Unit capacity is not an expectation that there will be two thousand additional units of housing constructed as a result of this bylaw. Unit capacity means if you took every piece of land in the proposed district, raised it to the ground, started over, and every single piece of land was redeveloped as multifamily housing, and every parcel was built to the maximum capacity that was allowed, how many units would you put there? It's a hypothetical number. That's really a measurement of our dimensional requirements. It's not an expectation of how many units are going to be built, and we are unlikely to ever see anywhere near it, particularly since we already have so much multifamily housing and other development needs areas. So what I would encourage you to do is really focus less on measurements and more on outcomes. The site selection was strategic here. We included a lot of parcels with the intent of distributing density and strategically selected many where there wouldn't be any economic incentive for actual redevelopment, which is important because it achieves two things. One focuses the outcome of this law on the modest handful of parcels where it's not only appropriate to encourage reinvestment, but it's needed. And two, creates some consistent neighborhoods where multifamily housing already exists and the zoning and resulting redevelopment would match the feel of the neighborhood. There are fewer than five parcels totaling six acres that are currently vacant lots with a high probability of redevelopment in the next three or five years. So at maximum build-out capacity, these six acres would probably result in less than three hundred potential units of housing. And just for an illustration, Upland Woods has two hundred and sixty-two units. And many parcels in this district currently contain multifamily housing, including Avalon, which has a hundred and ninety-eight units. There wouldn't be much of an economic incentive for those types of properties to redevelop at all. Of the rest, redevelopment could occur gradually over the next thirty to fifty years as buildings or existing businesses reach obsolescence, or they could be redeveloped not at all. So realistically, you know, we would see some redevelopment as a result of this bylaw, but not every parcel and not all of them. Just kind of to wrap that up, you know, final thoughts. I don't consider this to be an aggressive piece of zoning. I think it's a thoughtful, modest proposal that tries to honor a desire to meet some housing needs in the community in places that make sense while still preserving the parts of Norwood that we all love the most and protect its future. Those are some of the most common questions that we've heard and things I wanted to try to address in advance of the public hearing. I also included just some information on upcoming events. Mr. Chairman, turn back to you.
Thank you, Sarah, for that presentation. Before we turn to the public comment, does anybody from the board have any questions or concerns? Or we straight to the public. Ernie?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd just like to thank the task force, which I happen to be on, and a lot of smart people there. And Sarah, you and your team did an outstanding job putting this together. Just, I'll comment later when we hear some comments from the floor, but I understand that not everyone is going to like this. There are, there's a, you know, there's a group of people that don't want any new apartments. There's people that like this, that think this is a good thing. There are people that are in between. So I understand that not everyone is going to be on board with this or happy, and that's fine. I think that what the task force did is look at this, and just a quick comment on the state, the state of Massachusetts. You know, they set this up for the commuter rails. Obviously, they're trying to get people to take the train into Boston. Boston is so outrageous in rents that they kind of want to spread the wealth a little bit. I understand that. And you're going to hear the word affordable units a lot. And the state, in my opinion, didn't really make this so it's affordable. They only required ten percent, and they looked up to the towns to add, which we did. But affordability today, and a lot of us, I'm looking around the room, and I'm thinking we're all basically the same generation, except a few young guys back there, it's not what it was anymore. Nobody's putting up nine hundred dollar a month apartments. It's just land acquisitions, cost of materials, cost of labor, everything else, it's unfeasible. So the new norm is, you got to think that that's the new norm. What people are paying for right now is the norm. I'd love to say we could put up eight hundred month apartment, wouldn't I? But I think, and the task force looked at the properties that we chose for the zones, and it gave it an awful lot of thought. And in my opinion, they did a great job picking the properties. They are all properties that are ripe for redevelopment. A lot of them are multi-use already and would be primed for this type of thing. There is a housing need. We heard from a lot of the businesses in Norwood that it would be great if their employees could live closer to where they work. And going back to the price of an apartment, if a one-bedroom apartment is twenty-two-hundred dollars, well, it's going to be twenty-two-hundred dollars in Norwood, but it's also going to be twenty-two-hundred dollars in Waltham. So it wouldn't be, it would be nice to pay the twenty-two-hundred dollars in Norwood and walk to work than have to live in Burlington or Waltham and drive. And I think a lot of businesses would like, you know, the idea to have housing. And that was a big part of our task force and our community involved was accessibility. And again, I'll make some more comments later as I hear comments coming in. I really think, again, I understand everyone's not going to agree, but I really think that this bylaw is geared to Norwood and is well-written and is really, I mean, will fit this town without a tremendous... Are we going to see some initial growth? Yes, we probably will. But I think this bylaw really is tailored to Norwood and will work. I will say, I want to thank everyone who sent in a letter. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to end from all into the record. I read them all. People make valid points on both sides of this, and they're well-taken. But I just, I really, I think this bylaw works, and I do support it, but I'll also be here to answer any questions from... Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Before we go to the public comment, is there any other members of the board that have any comments or questions?
I just want to agree on the part where they did pick the different parcels that particular footprints right along the tracks, and it's probably the best that they could have done as far as locating this zoning. And so that was well-thought-out, but I'm looking forward to hear from the folks here also.
Sure. And I'd just like to reiterate, I'm sure many of you have heard many discussions about this, but this is in compliance with a state law, which is not optional to abide, to... We are obligated to enact zoning that's in compliance with this law, so just as a reminder. Okay, so we are going to shift this to comment. Just a couple reminders. We have a lot of people here. There's a lot of people online, and we'd like to have a very real discussion here. I'd ask that anybody who wishes to speak, raise their hand, stand, name and address. Please keep your comments as concise and to the point as possible. And to the extent possible, we're going to call in different people to ensure that people have their voices heard. If there are repeat comments, I mean, we'll accommodate as best we can. So with that, does anybody have any questions or concerns? Sir?
Brian Pometier, Ridge Road. My question might have been answered in the last question you had on your slides, but I'm wondering, with the zones that you have, how much have we already met of this two thousand homes? I thought I remembered in your last question saying we have three hundred units left to do, or am I misunderstanding that question?
So I...
So what I'm wondering is, how much have we already met because of the multifamily and the affordable or the housing that we already have?
So I will ultimately defer to Sarah because she's the expert on this, but just to predict what she's going to say, this is not a production mandate. This is a, the state is forcing us to zone for, as she said, if, for whatever reason, if these particular areas were razed to the ground and we had to rebuild, this is a... is what the zoning would look like. All our multifamily units, as they exist, are not countable towards any sort of quota in this calculus. And Sarah can speak to this.
Yeah, that 2,000 number, it's a hypothetical build-out number that tests kind of the rules that we create. We're not getting measured on how many units actually end up on the ground or are on the ground now. This is really all about the zoning and not about, you know, the present or resulting, you know, composition of the land itself, if that makes sense. One way that we do get low-key credit, you know, the fact that we already have multifamily housing does put us in a position of advantage because we already have neighborhoods that have multifamily housing. We're creating a district that's, you know, consistent with what's already there. And as a result, you know, not every parcel, if we were, backup, if we were zoning in an agricultural area, right, that was just acres and acres and acres of open space, ready to be sold to a developer to take advantage of this law, you might see much closer to that 2,000 figure, right? Because there's zero there now, and there's just infinite amounts of economic incentive to redevelop and build as much as possible there. What we're doing is using land that's already being used for a mix of other uses, one of which is multifamily housing. And so the incentive to kind of build out to the parameters of this bylaw just isn't there. And that means that as a result of this, we're not going to see nearly as much redevelopment as some communities might who don't have as much existing multifamily housing as we do. So it's a position of advantage, but it doesn't count in one way or another towards compliance with the actual law.
Okay. Anybody else? Sir?
Twenty-one Churchill Drive.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd just like to understand the differences, if there are any, between an area that's currently zoned multifamily, such as Windsor Gardens, and the new zoning requirements? In terms of density, in terms of heights of buildings, are there any differences, or is it the same?
Well, and once again, you can, Sarah can correct me, but the state is forcing us to designate a particular areas under this, to conform with their particular criteria. We have to essentially create new zones. They may, in certain respects, resemble what already is permitted on the site, but we have to create a new zoning district. And Sarah, you can take that ball.
So what are the requirements, what are the differences then?
Well, okay, so the on-the-ground differences between Windsor Gardens today and what would be permitted there, do you mind handling that?
Yeah, sure. So right now, the zoning that's proposed for Windsor Gardens would be a moderate lift over what's both allowed on the base zoning there and what's actually built, which remember are very often different things. Many of us who live in single-family homes in Norwood, you know, were required to have houses that are so far away from the side setbacks, but the zoning was created after our houses were built, and so we're non-conforming. The same is true of Windsor Gardens and lots of other properties in this district. But regardless, the proposal is a slight increase in what would be allowable there. Some of the more significant differences for Windsor Gardens in particular are related to setbacks and how close to one another buildings could be on the lots. The height is three stories for Windsor Gardens with an optional bonus to a fourth-story of building height if certain, you know, go above and beyond in public interest categories are met. There's some incentives.
The new zoning will allow-
The new zoning would allow for up to four. So it's a modest lift, but I wouldn't say it's a dramatic departure from what's either there or allowed, just enough to encourage some-
Is a hypothetical to raise everything in Windsor Gardens and then build according to the new zoning laws? And what would the density change if I were to maximize according to the new zoning laws?
If you give me your information, I could send you like an exact number of what that build-out figure could or would be.
10%? 20%?
But I would say it would be somewhere in that range, yes, 10 to 20%.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Yeah, Henry Graham, Liberty Lane. Okay, I always wanted to ask some questions about the bonuses. And the bonuses seem pretty generous for some of the things they could do. You know, if you had a 30-unit apartment, you would get a 10-unit bonus, and say we're getting $2,200, that's like $2.5 million over 10 years. It seems like a good bonus for putting grass on the roof and some of the other, using a concrete surface.
Well, there are other bonuses, including increasingly affordable units.
I'm talking about those as specific bonuses.
Sure.
If you put 40% grass on your roof, you'd do for $2.5 million over 10 years.
Sure.
That seems like you're encouraging to go higher.
Yeah.
And I thought the whole purpose of spreading this out to 7, 8 acres was to keep it down. This seems like, if I was building a building, why not for $2.5 million bucks?
Sure. Sarah?
So the bonus category for increased stormwater management practices offers the bonus in exchange for meeting two conditions. One is a choose-your-own-adventure on a little menu of options, one of which, you know, including a green roof or solar. But the other one, which is a requirement, is meeting the stormwater standards for new development versus redevelopment, which would be kind of a voluntary action on the developer's part. And I'm actually going to ask Holly to speak to those a little bit in greater detail.
Yeah, so it's an exciting time because the stormwater standards for the state of Massachusetts are actually in the process of changing. Right now, we're in a comment period for a new stormwater handbook, but that is what the zoning bylaw is tied to, is the Massachusetts State Stormwater Handbook. And it has different standards for new development, like Sarah was talking about, if you have a firm land or a meadow where you're building, you have to do the full suite of stormwater treatment. Whereas if you're redeveloping an old manufacturing building or parking lot, those standards are drastically scaled back, and there's practical reasons for that sometimes. Maybe you have site constraints with how high the groundwater is. Maybe you have site constraints with, it's a brown field, or there's something in the soil that you don't want to sort of start digging into. That being said, what we see in the planning board, as well as the conservation commission, is that often when redevelopment happens, and that's mostly what we see in Norwood, the standard right now is only that you have to improve what's there now. So if there's nothing there now, you can get away with doing very, very little stormwater treatment and still meet those standards. And we always push people to do more, but with what the state says you have to do right now for redevelopment, it's not much. So this bonus would be given if, instead of using those redevelopment stormwater standards, they use the same ones that you have to use when you're chopping down trees and starting from scratch. And that, particularly with where these districts are located, they're prone to flooding. And so the importance of trying to hold, infiltrate, and not just send the rain sort of rushing downhill seems very high for these locations and costly for, right? The more we can keep on a parcel of land and have the developer pay to treat it rather than sending it off and having the town pay to treat it, the better, in my opinion, in my experience here.
That's fine, but the developer isn't paying to treat it. He's getting extra rent every month on 10 units, say, in a 30-unit building.
All right, so any feedback, please, Director of the Chair. It's, so with regard to, just to clarify, is there, how many, to be able to utilize one of the bonus structures, there's two accommodations that have to be made?
So you have to voluntarily opt for the new development standards in the handbook and select one of a handful of options.
Okay.
In order to be eligible for that increase for development.
All right, Sarah, what, a follow-up, and then we'll ask others.
All right, I just asked, so if you just did number one, install a vegetated, a green roof of a 50%, you would get the extra story?
No.
And if you were treating all of the stormwater on the site-
On-site.
-to the full specifications for new development?
And that's the main, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, that's the main one, is you have to do that. You can't, you can't opt for the, for the cheap way. So if you want that bonus, you'd have to do the new development, which is extremely more expensive, more engineering, a lot more difficult to do, and do one of the secondary ones, which is, you know, grass on a roof. But the main one is that first one. So it is to go from redevelopment standards to new development, and it's a big jump, and it's a big nut for a developer to want to do. So he's got to do that if he wants that bonus.
Okay, Derek?
And to tap onto that, they were all very well cautioned, they're $2.5 million. All right? So there's that cost that goes with it. So it's not just an easy bonus to do this, all right?
Okay. Any other, start, ma'am, behind.
Hannah Happel in Walpole Street. To follow up, you're talking about water and whatever. Does that mean that the town, your conservation, can still override, say, they want to build within two feet of a stream or a swampy area and all that stuff? We're still golden on all of that, and the town has its say?
Oh, this doesn't, this doesn't obviate any of those requirements. All that still remains on the ground. It's just simply another zoning district, same as the zoning districts that are currently in effect. There was a question here. Sir?
Hi, Ken Roberts, Walpole Street, Norwood. I'm curious, this is apparently something we have no choice, if Massachusetts says we have to do this, right? But the trickle-down effect is, let's say 2,000 units, and there's four people per unit, five people per unit, okay, that's 6,000 to 8,000 people. Well, how does that trickle down in terms of cost to the town, in terms of the fire department, the police department, especially the school departments? All the costs are going up. So does the state of Massachusetts say, well, if your, if your overhead for the fire and the police and the schools increase by a certain percentage, will help to offset that cost because you're complying with the law? Or do our taxes just happen to go up, meet some of these additional expenses from these
So I can defer once again to my planning department colleagues here, but these properties, first of all, the entire, you mentioned 2,000 units, that is, as has been said, the absolute maximum build-out if the entire zone were razed to the ground and constructed to its outer limits, which would be permitted. But it's, you can expect that anything that would be built would be assessed and taxed from the town at an extraordinarily higher rate than what's currently on the ground. Some of these lots that are vacant or containing somewhat underutilized or, in some cases, abandoned industrial properties, will be taxed at an enormously higher rate. And do you have any comment or thoughts on that?
Yeah, it's a really good question.
Yeah.
So I think the check on total number of units, just because it bears repeating again.
Yeah.
I think a more realistic view that we might see for redevelopment in the next three to five years is somewhere around 300 units, and then with maybe, you know, another 200 units over 15, 20, 30 years. But, but the point remains that there's a concern about the impact on our existing resources as a town. I did run some calculations and looked at what the tax revenue increase was on similar properties, you know, Avalon being one example and the Regal Press Building being another. These are, again, you know, underutilized industrial-type buildings, and even though they were formerly taxed at the commercial rate, which is lower, as a multifamily residential property, the value of the property so significantly increased that in those instances, we saw increases in annual tax revenue to the town to the tune of sometimes six figures annually, which is a significant amount of revenue for the town and hopefully sufficient to be able to handle increases to our capacity. I have discussed with DPW, our existing sewer and utilities are sufficient to be able to cover this expansion. Because again, remember, this is infill development. It's, you know, filling in these places that already exist. It's not expanding our utility systems or anything to areas that are not already serviced by town, by town services.
All right, thanks. Great. Right here.
Anne Matthews, 24 Cross Street. I have a question or clarification, and then I have a comment about one of the sections. Are you saying that the central, central train station area is prime for multi-housing like Avalon? Because the neighborhood did not want Avalon there, and it has changed the neighborhood. We have increased amount of dog poop all over the place, to the extent that I went and spoke to the manager, and he admitted that they are a problem in that area, and trash coming down the street, as well as broken glass and bottles all over the front riverside. So if you're justifying multifamily housing like Avalon over in the Central Railroad area, the neighborhood character was changed because we were forced to have Avalon put where it was. So I have an objection to that. Then in section 3.5, the first, second paragraph, I guess it is, it says that basically the area over there was used as a catchment basin. Okay? Definition of a catchment basin is that it's used for rainwater and for retention. Now, they want to take 1/3 of the trees out of Hennessy Field to make it the water retention place. I asked Mark Ryan in that meeting, why can't we use the stuff near Central? Thank you, that area. So basically, if we're allotting more acreage than we need, I want to see some of that acreage being used as the retention basin instead of dumping it all down in Hennessy Field and destroying another part of the neighborhood. Why can't that be done? It's originally said right in here that that area was used as a catchment basin. So why aren't we looking at that? And I'm upset about this because all of this stuff was decided and zoned out before we ever had the meeting about what was going to happen to Hennessy Field. I'd like that section of Central Street re-examined for zoning to include putting a huge retention basin there, because all of the water that came down into our neighborhoods came not just from the hospital, but from all of Washington Street. And we've already been punished enough with having Avalon. We don't need to have Hennessy changed or destroyed.
Yeah. All right. No. Sir?
Pat Ronan, 35 First Road, District 7, Town Meeting Member. And I also served on the task force as a community at-large member. Through you to the chair. I've heard, since I moved here about four years ago, Avalon has, I don't know, I know the story where it necessarily wasn't wanted, but I just want to say for the record, I went to the park yesterday with my two-year-old, and we met a very nice couple who was playing with bubbles and let my kid play, and they actually gave it to us after, when they were done. I asked where they lived, and they said Avalon. So it was a nice, quaint, family moment that, by no means, didn't ruin my day. I didn't ask about her dog, but, so I did want to just say, in terms of the process, I have to, I was really, really impressed by the way that the town reached out and helped public hearings. I think a lot of communities probably, as I've seen, have followed this new law, have not been quite as open and inclusive as Norwood has been. I think all the feedback from all the stakeholders has been incorporated here. And I'm with Ernie in terms of the affordable housing. When I saw the language, I was like, this doesn't even address affordable housing. This is more housing that isn't affordable. So as a task force member, I was like doing notes of, why don't we make it as small as possible? Only allow people to build if there's an incentive for affordable. But the fact of the matter is, is like, I didn't get to, I don't get to write the zoning. The town collectively has to write the zoning. And that's why I think this is a perfect compromise and honestly, common sense for the areas around the train station. And I think everyone's feedback is incorporated here. So again, this is more of a comment, not a question. And I think everyone's feedback is incorporated here, so again, this is more of a comment, not a question. But I think this is a really good balance of everyone's needs while also still being able to comply with the law. Thank you.
All right, take one more in here, and then do you want to go offline for a bit? All right, so we'll take, sure.
Hi, yes, Elizabeth Hestad, twenty-six Pumped Up. I also about the Avalons and it has been a large improvement over the abandoned warehouse that was previously there, but that is sort of neither here nor there. My question was actually a little bit based off of Mrs. Homewood's discussion about the parking spaces in your first meeting, her part of the meeting. And so I was just wondering, is it too late to, the parking mandate is in, right? Like, there is no, you wouldn't go down to like one unit, one parking space per unit? Is this, that's kind of off the table at this point? Or just, this is anecdotal, but I live right down there. We have one car for a four fam- four-person family. I know a lot of other people who have one car for a four-family. I know that's not always realistic, living in Norwood. We could not survive without any car, but as the zones are written right now, it's like one point two spaces per, down at Windsor, and one point one at the other two. Is that right?
It's one point five for Windsor Gardens, so that is a one point five spaces per unit. And then one point one for Norwood Depot and Norwood Central.
And there's, would the board consider either removing parking mandates for more, to put in more green space or put in more housing? Or are we too far along in that process?
There's a great deal of study.
I'm sure that this was a huge part of your.
Well, hard, part of our discussion was that Sarah, who had the, has had a great deal of access to other towns, and not only that, but what the market would bear, what developers would believe to be a marketable project. And there is a, sort of a happy medium somewhere, if I can use that term. And I think we did our best to try to hit it. But I understand your concerns. I'm going to move just to online for a minute if we can, if, if that's appropriate. How many, are all those people waiting to go, or are they just watching?
They're just watching, but.
Oh, well, if nobody has a question or a concern online, then we'll stay in the room.
People can use the raised hand feature, Jim.
Okay, just let me know. Duncan, yeah.
Duncan Mayo, I'm not a Norwood resident, but I own a property at two ninety-three Lennox Street in Norwood. I've been, we started renting that property in nineteen ninety-five. Bought the property in two thousand and four, renovated it, and moved. The company that I own, my business partners, Mystic Seeing Studios there in two thousand and five. We've got over a hundred employees, some of whom live in Norwood and walk to work, but also employees who drive from Lynn, from Swansea, a bunch of us from Rhode Island. And it, this is a, is a great program. It's going to make a big difference in town. It will be tremendously helpful to us, trying to run a business in town, to have more housing, or more housing types for employees to choose from, who can walk to work and hopefully avoid owning a car. We currently have more employees who drive or take the train from Boston than live in Norwood. And that, I mean, I've heard comments at the many hearings that I've been to about this process over the last year, about people saying this is about Boston taking advantage of the suburbs. And I, I don't know what to say to that, other than we're bringing, we're bringing people who live in Boston out here to work, and they could be here paying taxes, eating in the restaurants, going to the local entertainment, and perhaps not owning any cars or as many cars. I applaud the efforts of this board and all the people who are involved. And as the owner of four point three acres in the middle of the Norwood Central Zone, I think the largest parcel in that zone, we want to see more housing around us so that we can keep running our business here and have, and create a better environment for our employees and for the town.
Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, I'm Mr. Chair Shady Greenwell, eighty-one Temple Street. And I was also a member of the three A working group. And I just wanted to underscore some of the things that we heard, really emphasize the fact that we need more housing choices in town for different phases of people's lives. And we heard a lot at the beginning of a working adult's life, we are not financially ready or even have the capacity to take on a single-family home. But also for adults who are aging and who want to age in place and can't do it in their second floor, walk out with their bedrooms upstairs. So not only is there value to a measured family in the house, but I really want to underscore, placing the multifamily housing near the commuter rail stations. We have a huge advantage in Norwood over other towns in that two out of three commuter rail stations bookend our central business district. So we're not just bringing people into town and giving them more housing options, but we're putting them by local business and we're putting them in areas that are unwalkable and that are easier on the household budget. So you're potentially having a lower cost for your housing, but you could also maybe have a lower cost by only having one car at the household or not driving as much and saving gas. So I think it is an advantage in the way that our town is laid out, that our commuter rail stations are also supporting our central business district. And then lastly, I'm also on the zoning board of appeals, and I have had to say no personally to developments that were great projects for the town, but we didn't have the zoning or the powers of board to say yes. So I'm excited to support this as a tool to allow development to meet that market demand for the housing options that we need to see in town.
Any other comments in the back? Mr. Sam.
District Five. I've said from day one, we've got fifty-five percent of the apartments in Norwood. We're a little tiny community. We're saturated from nineteen hundred, the build-out is here. If you take somebody that's going to give them like Windsor Gardens, they're not going to put a commercial base on their, on their first floor to get to a fourth floor. They're going to take the fourth floor and they're going to add it as apartments. They're going to knock down a few little buildings and put up forty units per, uh, unit or building section, because that's incentive at three thousand dollars a month plus. The five percent bonus, like you said to people later tonight, I'm a hundred percent against it because we're trying to keep the character of Norwood, Norwood, not Gettle, as far as the crossroads in the city. This is Norwood. We've done great with three stories, mandated three stories. It would be great if people incorporated that street and kicked the bonus off of it. We've got two thousand potential people plus the three thousand out of the two thousand units or fifteen hundred of seven hundred units. Our schools could be bulging. We won't do have to hire a hundred teachers. You've got to think of this whole big picture of where we're going to get hit with all this extra costs and headaches and traffic and tar, to be able to park the lots in. These are big buildings. They're going to put a couple of shrubs and solar panels and trees on their property and get five percent to the fourth floor. Why do we need it? We're ninety-five percent of the apartments in Norwood pretty much. The space and the air is going to get ruined. You know, we have to think this thing over and not rush into it, but I just think that we're going to get, Norwood's going to get Gettle, West Rock Springs, Forest Hills, and it's just going to change the character of Norwood, it'll be a little city.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns? Sir.
My name's Ed Lynch, Cross Street. Thank you for the presentation. Did a good job with the, I think, when I'll give acreage, you know, it's good. Norwood already has, I guess it's probably going to be a done deal, but they have five point eight units per acre. That's the average residential parcel, density. So it's five point eight units per acre. Ken has two point two. Westwood has one point five. Walpole has one point eight. Sharon has one point two five. Foxborough has one point six. Milton has two point eight. Avon has two point two. Gettle has four. So it's the density that, you know, like Mr. Savers saying, it just, you know, you're going to have more, need more firefighters, police and teachers. I know they're going to put in two thousand units in a couple of years. It's going to be three, four hundred this summer, a couple hundred next year, whatever. But they're not going to live there, take the train to Boston, come home, go out to eat, walk around Norwood Center and spend their money in Neil Sharps and Coffee Sharps. You know? That's what we've been saying for twenty years. We've got a lot of vacancy up there. We've got a lot of, we've got a lot of tents. So it's just, the whole thing's too bad, but it's, you know, affordable housing, I don't know if there is such a thing as that, because it's just too bad, you know? What happens?
Any other comments from the floor? Just in the back with the red chair.
Jim Garrett, District One. I agree with what Mr. Sav said, what you just said also. And another thing I want to talk to you is, you've got the seniors in this town that are on fixed income, veterans and everything. You're running a lot of talent where we're doing stuff, and we need their help. They've been knowing the whole way, three people.
Sure. Any, is anybody online yet? No. Oh, there's another thing, I'm sorry. Yeah, there's a hand back there.
Thank you, Joan Gray, District Nine, ten Wall Street. You have a question that the, the amount of units would be about three hundred in the next five years. Is that correct?
It's a, an estimate, but.
Yes. Well, with three hundred units and let's say four people in each unit, that's twelve hundred people. I'm really concerned, because every year, the school budget is always looking, they have to cut their budget. The students have to lose different activities, different classes gets cuts, special ed. I know particularly my daughter had to use special ed, and that had to get cut drastically. And that's a problem. I grew up in Gettle when I moved to Norwood thirty years ago, to be away from the city. I feel so Norwood is really turning into a city and not a small town, that I wanted to bring my children up there. And to be honest with you, the way the direction is, I feel like I want to move out of this town. And that's not why I moved here. I moved here to stay here and to have my family come here. So I think that you guys should really rethink this. And I wanted to live here as a senior, but I don't know if I'm going to be able to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Ernie.
Hi, I just want to, and I know my morning coffee buddies are going to like what I say here, but, you know, I've heard this, that, you know, yes, Norwood has a lot of apartments. There's no doubt about it. How many of those apartments are three-family homes in South Norwood? Two-family rentals in the Ward and Hoyle Street, Vernon Street, all through, in my district, Edgewood, there's, you know, duplexes, and they're spread out throughout the town. And so that, that accounts for it. And, and, you know, I remember as a kid, when Windsor Gardens was built, you know, that was, if you lived in Windsor Gardens, that was millionaire acres, you were a Rockefeller. That was, we were so proud of it at that. We, we just don't, my own opinion is that, and some people have heard this before, that if, if you do apartments correctly in the right location and do it right, they're fine. I, I always say, you know, who, who, very few of us, probably when we were young, didn't live in an apartment. And people move into apartments and they move out of apartments. Hopefully, they, they live in an apartment in Norwood and they buy a house in Norwood as they get a family. And, and new, young people move in. So that, you know, the, that's what I want to say. I mean, as far as the character of the town, becoming, we're becoming a city, and, and look around the towns around us that have, their downtowns have been revitalized with, with new growth and new redevelopment. And they're not cities. And, and, and I guess my que- my question would be, would a, would a huge vacant, vacant lot that's been empty since Beaver Cole left fifty-five years ago, is that the character of the town? Is that the character of the town? You want to see that empty, drive by that empty lot for fifty-five years? Or would you like to see some nice new development, some new growth, and some new people come in that will support the downtown and walk to the, the places? And I, someone mentioned they don't do it, I believe they do. And I think if you go to some of the businesses over by Star Market, that people from Avalon, a lot of them go there. So I, I'd just like to, you know, that's the other side of the story, my, my side of that. And I, and I think that, again, the, the locations that we chose, you drive by and you say, you know, I'm not really proud of that, you know, and that looks like that, that's a vacant lot. You know, I mean, is that the character of the town? I'd rather see something new, something vibrant, people, you know, activities, people that spend money in the town, that live here, that pay taxes here, maybe they'll buy a home here. And, and that's just, I just, my opinion on that. And again, it's only my opinion, but I don't expect everyone to agree with me.
Two repeat comments, just, I'll start with you, sir. Oh, actually, I think that was a response to you, I'll get you next. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, just to your point, you said that people coming in is, that with these multi-units are paying taxes. They're not paying taxes, it's the, it's the building owner.
Well, someone, someone's paying, yeah, yeah.
Well, some should be paying taxes, but you're bringing in all of these bodies. And you have one taxpayer that owns the building, but you're bringing in all of these bodies. So, you know.
They're also spending money in town.
It is going to affect this town a lot, it really is.
That you, you, I actually have a right to your opinion. No, no, that's, that's fine.
But I know there's a lot of people that I speak to that come in.
Yep, sure.
And again, I know there's a lot of people here, but it really is going to affect our town. And it does feel like it's, and like I said, I didn't go up here.
Do you have somebody online, sir?
I grew up in Gettle, which is right next to Austin.
All right.
I feel so it's drifting in this direction, when you keep adding, how many, how many, how many multiple families do we have in this town? How many units? Do you guys have any answer to that?
Well. How many housing units? Where that, we can.
How many units are apartments, maybe apartments?
I don't believe that data is.
Well, I, well, I can give you, and I, this is totally off my head. We were doing the forty B, number of years ago, when the forty B was the hot topic. I think we had twelve thousand five hundred dwelling units in the town. And a dwelling unit is, so if there's a, a house in South Norwood, that's three levels, three, that's three dwelling units, one house. So that's how it's, and if we're fifty percent, say rental, so six, six thousand.
Sure.
I'm guessing, I mean, I'm just doing off the.
Six thousand in the whole town units?
Dwelling units, dwelling units. I'm, I'm just saying, if, if we're at fifty percent, and ten years ago, we had twelve thousand dwelling units.
This, this data, we, we can, we can come up with numbers, I'm sure that they're available.
But around there, it's pretty, it's pretty close.
Sir, you have a question or comment, and then I'll get you back.
Yeah, Henry Graham.
Yeah.
Okay. I want to go back to the bonuses. I think they're a bad idea. I think you give an awful lot for what you're asking these people to do. I mean, ten, ten percent of the unit is a tremendous amount of money a month. I mean, we did this with the crossings. If anybody's old enough here to remember the crossings, what happened with that disaster? For an extra floor, we got a van. Those people have made millions of dollars off of that, and a van is in the junkyard, I'm sure. Yeah, I just don't see the, the point of offering bonuses, that, that amount of money for what you're asking them to do.
Sure. Sir, back there, do you have a hand up?
Doug Jackson, Andrews Street. I think when we build these big developments, Ernie's mentioned some of them, Joan mentioned some of them. One developer or one development company makes all the money. You're not helping any of the people that are living in those apartments. Everybody needs a place to live. Those people are paying ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars a year and getting no equity. We should be trying to build small condominiums for those young couples, for those seniors that are over fifty-five, let them be directly, help them get mortgages, soft-second mortgages and things like that, so that they can keep some of their money in their pocket, not give it to a developer.
So this, this, just to focus on this, and once again, I can be corrected. Quite literally, none of these units, this zoning, speaks to whether or not the, the units are rental or, or ownership. So the market dictates completely whether or not a developer will come in and build condominiums as opposed to apartments.
And, and we cannot.
And we can't mandate that as a town.
We can't mandate that it's over fifty-five.
Yeah, we can't mandate over fifty-five. This particular law that we're trying to, to comply with, specifically, it prevents that. So your comments about ownership are understood. We, as a board, have spoken about that, and we have our own preferences, but ultimately, if a proposal comes forward, we can't dictate whether or not it's ownership or rental.
Do you mind if I address some of the concerns I heard?
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I'm so sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch your name, but this one. Joan. You know, I think some of your concerns are really widely shared by a lot of people in town, and it was the subject of a lot of study. And it was the subject of a lot of study and discussion in this process. You know, I don't have a crystal ball, none of us does. We don't know what's going to happen in the future. Sometimes the best we have is to look at the past and, and what that has done for our community. And so by using kind of that review as a guideline, you know, we kind of, we looked at population trends. It's actually 45% is the census figure from 2020. 45% of our housing units are rental households in Norwood. And one might think that with all of the recent multifamily housing developments that we've seen, you know, in the last few years of our 40B, you know, struggle with the state, Avalon and Upland Woods. You might think with those new developments that that 45 number would have jumped a lot, but it's actually been pretty static for decades. Norwood has always had a lot of rental housing. And these smaller, you know, developments, even though they feel big to us, you know, a couple hundred units there, it hasn't really dramatically changed that percentage. We also looked at the numbers to kind of figuring out, okay, what, what does the impact on schools look like? The reality is, is that multifamily housing, even though it's housing for everybody and we don't age or restrict it, very traditionally tends to attract smaller households. You know, you do have a lot of studios, ones, maybe twos, a handful of three bedrooms. But in general, people who gravitate towards this type of housing are people at the beginning of their, you know, adulthood or, or seniors who are wanting to downsize. And so you tend to see smaller households with, with fewer kids. And so if you look at all of the apartment complexes in Norwood and how many children reside per unit in, in each of those complexes, and this is the larger complexes, not the triple deckers or the, the two-family rentals, but you know, these larger complexes that we might expect to see as a result of this development. The statistic is like .24 kids per unit, which isn't to say that, you know, one child in the school system costs, doesn't cost money, certainly they do. But to try to kind of temper some of those fears, I think that, you know, the anticipated changes to school enrollment over the last few years have shown that our school enrollment has stayed steady. Avalon has come up, Upland Woods has come up, that school enrollment has, has stayed steady. The costs of providing that education certainly have gone up and that's a whole other conversation for another time. But with respect to actual building new units and bringing them online, it fundamentally hasn't resulted in this huge change in the number of kids who are enrolling in the schools. You know, and again, the interest is really to provide more housing opportunities for people in all walks of life so that the seniors who can't afford their three, four-bedroom homes or can't access, you know, like my house, the only bathroom is on the upstairs. We talked to a lot of people in this very room in our small group discussions who were seniors who said, hey, you know, thinking about it now, if something happens to me, if I fell or broke a hip next year, I don't know where I'd go. Like my kids don't live in Norwood, they live in Plainville. They can't afford to move back here. I couldn't move in with them and stay in town. You know, where would I go? And multifamily housing often presents just a new option for people. Is it for everyone? No. But I, what I would say is, you know, these are goals that we are also trying to work towards. I don't think it's a, you know, an either-or proposition. I think the task force and the planning board and the planning department's, you know, task was really to, how do we take this law and create a bylaw that meets as many of these needs, which we do all agree on, right? In a way that, that is something that we can live with and doesn't really change too fundamentally our neighborhoods or the costs of, you know, providing town services. And, you know, that's what we were hoping to achieve.
All right. In the back, the gray shirt.
Vic Babel, 130, recently moved to 130 Berwick Place. And I was looking for a year in Norwood to do one floor living. I couldn't find anything. Then I resigned to the fact that I have to go out to Walpole or wherever where I could find a place, whether it be Swan Hawn or a unit like that. And then this house just happened to, Clem Riley's old house just happened to be on the market and I was lucky to grab it. I mean, last Sunday and Saturday, there was a house across the street from the high school. He must have had 200 cars there during the course of the day. Is there a need for more housing? Yes, there is. Where are those 199 people going to go that didn't get that house?
Yes. I'm trying to see. Go ahead, go ahead. Can I, trying to get some more first-time commentators.
Does the state law require the town to have...
I'm sorry, sir, we can't, we can't hear you. All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Does the state law require the town to have a net increase in housing?
No, this particular law does not require that. It just requires zoning that could potentially permit construction by right.
So that potential permission would in effect increase the housing in the town, right?
If...
I mean, if you could, if you could put in zoning in different areas that already meet the requirement, then wouldn't you have the ability to create no new housing and still meet the requirement of the, of the state?
In theory, yeah, in theory. Like for example, Avalon is in...
Because what I'm hearing from the crowd is that's what they would like.
Well, no, just to, just to focus on this, Avalon sits in this proposed zone. It's, Avalon's essentially brand new. The likelihood of somebody coming in and raising Avalon and rebuilding something substantially identical to it is highly unlikely. So we are looking at, it's not as if the units in Avalon are counted towards some sort of quota. That's not the way this law works. But the way this zone is constructed, at least that particular parcel hopefully is built out in a suitable manner for decades and decades to come.
Because on Lennox Street, you only, you only rezoned one side of the street. You didn't rezon the side that has multifamily housing, right?
The, the, if I may, let me...
Sure.
Norwood Central Sub District contains the side of Lennox Street that's adjacent to the train tracks. That's significant because that's the only side of that street that's zoned as manufacturing right now. The other side of the street is zoned as general residential. So by changing the, the overlay here, which we wouldn't be changing the base zoning, but we would be offering a zoning option that is residential, which is more consistent with the general residential than, you know, a paint thinner factory on the other side of the street.
I just wanted to make the point that the, the state law doesn't require the town to increase its population.
Not specifically, that's not the wording or the directive that's contained in the body of the statute. No. All right, the black shirt there, sir.
Steve Esco, District 5, 14 Anticott Street. Ernie made a comment really, and I agree with him. And I just want to make a statement about Norwood. Yeah, we do love Norwood. I don't disagree with my wife. My wife would like to move out. I don't. But that's a story for another day. But the thing is, you take a look at like Westwood or Dover or Sharon, what commercial properties do they have that keep their taxes down low? Westwood is blessed with University Ave right now. But other than that, their whole residential area, there's no commercial properties down there. We have Route 1, our great auto mile. But I'm just making the point, if we didn't have any of that, you know, we'd be paying the taxes right now, being so close to Boston. It's something to think about. That's all I, I wanted to say. I mean, we're blessed with so many things here in Norwood, our own Lincoln Park. And it's more like, I mean, there's so many good things that are going on in Norwood. Yeah, we're growing. We're going to grow a little bit more. But think of the other side, the flip side of all of that. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Sure.
Just a time check.
Yeah.
I mean, we...
Okay. So there's nobody online?
There's nobody on...
We'll take just one last comment. Oh, two comments. All right, I'll take you ma'am and then attorney here. Okay.
You brought up the 40Bs. Are these areas going to be subjected to 40Bs by developers?
Sure. Oh, grab that.
So Norwood has met its, its safe harbor status under Chapter 40B. We have 1.5% of our total land area is set aside as affordable housing. So the type of 40B challenge that you're probably referring to where there's a, a project that gets to receive waivers of all of our local zoning requirements because we have not met that 1.5% yet? No, we would not be subject to, to any of those types of...
I have a follow-up to that. Anne McAdoo, it's 24 Cross Street. If we build more houses though, that eats at that 1.5 if there's not low income there. The other question that I have...
Is that, that's a question?
Do you mind if I answer that before I forget the answer? Another question. So each of, that's why we have an inclusionary zoning requirement for these. That's why, you know, at least 10%, you know, any complex that's developed under this bylaw that has eight or more units, needs to also contain some affordable housing. And what that does is that keeps up with that pace of development. There's two ways you can meet compliance under 40B. One is that 1.5% land area and the other is 10% of our total housing units. We meet on the 1.5% and so any affordable housing that we develop is only going to add to that because the total land area doesn't change. But we're also really close to that 10%. Either way you put it, any development under this bylaw is, is either shoring up our existing compliance, right? Or getting us closer to 10% or above. Either way, you know, it is, it is shoring up that compliance under 40B. We would not be following behind.
All right.
The solar I sent you, I put solar on my roof at my own expense. If you are going to give people bonuses or whatever it is for solar, I want the same deal as they're going to get.
Understood. David, you have, attorney here.
If I may. Chairman David Hearn Jr., my residence is 98 Berwick Place. It's down the street from my new neighbor Vic Babel. I'm looking forward to the housewarming. I, I'm going to speak wearing two hats. I'm going to speak first as a resident of 45 years in this town. I've had a business in this town for 30 years. I have been involved in various town offices and activities and most of you know that. This is something that we have to do by law. We can't say, no, we're not going to do it. And there was a suggestion made at a discussion, you know, various discussions, oh, let's just ignore it. Let's vote against it. This has to be done. It has to be done because it's the law. It has to be done because it's a good thing, the idea of it. We need housing. We need housing throughout Massachusetts, throughout the Northeast. And I understand the concerns people have about whether this is going to change the character of our town. The way the districts have been drawn, the areas that would qualify for the MBTA 3A zoning are either already developed in a similar fashion to how they might be developed under this bylaw or are in the types of parcels that cry out for some sort of development. And we heard a little while ago, do you want to keep looking at Beaver Cove as an empty spot? Or the adjoining parcel or some of the other parcels that perhaps outlive their usefulness? Those are manufacturing zones there. I'm pretty sure people don't really want a whole lot of manufacturing. There hasn't been a call for manufacturing. So let's put it to a use that is good. We need housing. And this has been done in a way that it's not going to have a great effect upon how we live our lives in Norwood. It isn't in the residential uses by law. Yes, it's going to touch some districts. Every district has to touch another district. But this, a great deal of thought has gone into this, a great deal of effort. And the result would be that we will have new housing for people. Now we hear, oh, it's going to overrun the schools. Ms. Dixon spoke to that a moment ago. The experience has been that we built up Norwood, we didn't have a flood in the schools, same with Avalon. The kids aren't all the same age. It's not like you're putting 25 kids in one grade and all of a sudden you've got to hire new teachers. They're spread out, where, where they do have kids. Many of these apartments would likely be occupied by people who were just starting out or people who decide to move out of their larger homes and make them available for younger families, but they want to stay in the town or they want one level of living or they don't want the responsibility of mowing the grass or taking out the trash or doing things like that. And by the way, these residential complexes pay taxes, but don't get the same services we get in our own homes. They don't get their trash picked up. They don't plow, their roadways are not plowed by the town. They plow their own roads and driveways. They deal with their own trash. And they still bring people to the town who contribute to the fabric of the town. Now, I've heard for years the derogatory comments about renters and about apartments. Mr. Petrikowski said earlier, who among us hasn't lived in an apartment somewhere along the way? I think just about all of us did sometime along the way. People live in rental housing by choice or by necessity. There are many people in this town who over the years have lived in rental housing for whatever reason, who contribute tremendously as town meeting members, as members of boards, as volunteers. So let's not look at the people who happen to live in apartments as if they're something different from those of us who are lucky enough to have single-family homes. Everybody contributes. And this is something that will help. We can't dictate to developers whether it is rental or condominium, uh, ownership. We can't do that. The market determines that. And the fact of the matter, zoning can never dictate ownership. So if people want more condominiums, encourage it. But frankly, some developers say they just can't afford to do that. They can afford to build something. And the idea that you get $2.5 million by adding a floor, by putting grass on top of it, ignores the language in the bylaw. As Ms. Jones mentioned, you've got to comply with the new full-strength stormwater. People don't understand that these developers aren't getting filthy rich. The average return on a lot of these apartments is maybe 6%. That's not a big return for the amount of risk that goes into them. So let's get with it. Let's pass it as town meeting members and others who are interested in it. Because it's something we have to do and the way it's being done by our planning department, by our planning board, by the task force, is something that will, I think, is going to have less of a negative effect and a lot of positive effects compared to what could have been done. Now, let me put the other hat on, if I may, after I have a sip of water. You have received correspondence. Now I'm, I'm speaking as the attorney for the owner of property, 25 East Hoyle Street. That's the parcel next door to the Beaver Cove property. You have received correspondence from a member of the Board of Selectmen, speaking for himself, not for the board, because I don't think they've taken a position on the matter. You've also received correspondence today, I believe, from the general manager. I'm not sure who he was speaking for or not. But the suggestion has been made that the East Hoyle Street property ought to be taken out of this, that they don't belong in this district, that they're part of the medical services overlay district and that they would be put to better use by keeping them out of the potential for residential development and instead reserving them until somebody comes along and says, oh, well, it's part of the hospital, we want some medical office space or we want to run some other medical activity there. My clients own the property and members of their family have owned that property for many years. They have, over the years, talked with Stewart and others about whether there's an interest in devoting the property to medical or medical-related work. There is no market for that right now and there's not likely to be. They've engaged Newmark, which is the, really the premier brokerage house for medical office and medical facilities in New England. And they have, they're the act, the most active leasing sales team in the town, in, in New England, I mean. And they've studied this site, Newmark has, for better than two and a half years. They don't see any feasible way to develop this for commercial use. My client spoke to Stewart. They didn't want it. They didn't even want it for parking. They used to have a parking, they let the lease go. The Guile Building is available for medical office space. It's fully leased, but it's only 20% occupied. Stewart cut back, even before the pandemic, they cut back. They left the Drama Center. The, there's property that they rent down on Pearl Wall Street in Westwood that is 150, 100,000 square feet, roughly 20% of it's being used. If you could say these are fully leased, we need more space, they're not being used. They're incorporating the new hospital, which I hope... They're incorporating the new hospital, which I hope to God gets built.
Finished.
And talk about, you know, we all have our wishes of what might happen with that. But they're incorporating space for outpatient activities, including physician offices. That's something that the physicians want. Go to the Faulkton Hospital and their doctors have their suites in the building. You need something done, you can get an X-ray, get an MRI, whatever you need, come back up and see the doctor, you're not running from one building to the other. So Newmark marketed this property for a long time, seeking medical uses. They got zero bids for medical or office developers because there is no market. But they do have people expressing tremendous interest in using this for residential purposes. My client spoke to Moderna and said, hey, do you want this property for some of your activities, some of your labs, something like that? No. We're more interested in where housing can be found for the people who come to work for us. This echoes what Mr. Mayo said earlier, and I remember him saying that at a meeting last summer when we were discussing this. People who work, who employ lots of people, whether it's Moderna, or a hospital, or whatever, need housing for their employees. The property on East Oil Street, and I'm not speaking about Beaver Oil, I don't care really what happens with that. My client's property is ideally designed for that, close to the hospital, close to the downtown, close to the train. And this is the type that they've heard. They've heard from hospitals like the Brigham. Their concern is not, we don't need more office space, we need our employees to be able to find housing. So this is, I urge you to stick with what has been recommended for that property. Now, the suggestion is, well, if it's apartments, it's not gonna generate as much in the way of taxes, tax at the residential rate as perhaps a commercial activity there. But if you don't have a commercial activity there, your taxes are gonna be zero. If you have a residential activity there, you're gonna be generating hundreds upon hundreds of thousands of dollars. Avalon, for all the complaints we get about, is generating about $660,000 in taxes a year. That's 0.5% of our total budget. It's not bad for one property, one development, to take up that, to generate that much. And that's without them getting all the services we get in our houses. So the cost of developing medical space militates against it. People said, well, look at Needham, they, they need more space over Glover, that's Israel. They don't need, they don't, they won't build it. I didn't interrupt you, sir. And they don't, they're not building it, even though there is space available. So I ask you, again, to keep this in mind. The office space that the hospital will need exists, will exist in the new hospital, exists at the Guile Building. But the housing that the hospital employees need, the Moderna employees need, other people need, the Mystic Studio people need, doesn't exist. So, you know, don't get much better return, much better service to the purpose of the law by keeping this in. And I asked you to keep that in as you planned it, as the task force recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. So in time constraints, should we cut this shorter, a couple more?
It's past 9:30.
All right, we will, I'll take two more comments. Sir, you had your hand up. We have to go quickly if possible.
Steve Brody, 102 Devon Road. Unfortunately, this is mandated by the state. Now, the planning board has done a very good job at trying to take this required state requirement and make it into a zoning law. Now, there are people that are against it, and I understand why, but your main concern is you gotta put pressure on our representative, John Rogers, and our Senator Mike Rush to maybe try to get this law overturned somehow, so we get some relief. Thank you.
Thank you. The last comment is from somebody who's not been heard yet. Mr. Plasko.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate this opportunity to address this matter tonight. I have submitted a letter, let's see if you can reference it.
It's been incorporated in the record.
And for the record, I'd like that part of tonight's hearing. It stated that we're complying with state law, and we absolutely are. I don't think we can argue with that, as we met with several people. But it does matter, the details and how we do it. I've heard a lot of complaints or concerns tonight about how that's gonna be done. There's also, I'm hoping tonight is the start and not the end of discussion on this matter because I'm a little concerned, disappointed, that we had a nice presentation, one of generalities. We didn't, we didn't have a presentation of the bylaw. People don't see the bylaw, discuss the bylaw, and what it means in the different parts of it. It's really not significant. You need to know the bylaw. You know that one of my biggest concerns is that I disagree that these particular areas, or some of these particular areas, are appropriate for mixed use, as mixed use is defined in this law. One extreme cross from presidential area, it's not an area. Now, the law itself, the language they use, and one part, it's a development issue, no, it's the wrong section, sorry, that development, 3A zoning developed, should we have a skill, identity, and aesthetics that is compatible with existing, it's around the uses of minimal impact. That would be major, could be major impact in a residential area. It just doesn't belong in that type of residential area. There are areas, where you've went in some of the towns that are doing this, and a couple of the areas in our town, that have been made highways, or made roads, and traffic, heavy traffic areas, and it makes a little more sense there, but it doesn't like every residential area. Windsor Gardens, what are we doing, talking about putting mixed use in Windsor Gardens? That's crazy. And that should come out. It probably would never happen, but if we're gonna do a bylaw, why don't we do it right? Why don't we have something like that? As you know, and it's been discussed, I don't believe we should have East Oil Street property included in this. And it's for a number of reasons, and it could be argued either way, I agree. And I'm not against housing. I've spent 39 years of my life providing housing, safe, decent sanitary housing, mostly apartments for individuals. Well, not against apartments, I know their value. And I would also have done quite a, quite a bit of it, and much more than any other community around us, and how much more can we do? But on this particular site, it's been said, oh, it's an investment area to have new investment, and it's been underused. It's true, it's just a parking lot, but what did their parking lot do? Their parking lot's aborted in Norwood Hospital. That's where all their staff went because the town in Norwood wouldn't allow the Rogers. And we had that hospital, had to serve the community and the region. Those people had to park somewhere. And it's only, well, three years ago that we've resolved that. Now, town plan will let us down with a presentation that it should be a continued part of the medical overlay district. Went to town meeting, we just did it. It's only been three years, and it's three years, it wasn't gonna happen until after the hospital got built. That hasn't happened yet. We should give that some time to play out. If you disagree with me and it stays in, that's a proper place, in my opinion, for mixed use to be considered. Also, the other end of One X Street, cross from the Hat Street, that area, because of the Hat Street and that, the banks, the other general businesses are already in that area, that, in my opinion, is appropriate for mixed use. But Windsor Gardens, that large section of One X Street, that one Mystic Studios, that should not be mixed use, as it's defined in this law. You know, we have to comply with the law. But the law says we have to cover an area for 2,045 units. And I know the difference, it's hard to stop tonight, try to explain to people, don't understand, that we're not getting new units per se. But we will get about 400 new units in just a couple years. And those are probably the only ones we'll get for a long time. But that's a lot, the area that they're gonna be in, on top of what we've already resolved for, on top of what will be coming down the road. We have to take all of the consideration in broad view, and this is gonna have a lot of impact. So we should be zoning this down to only what we need to. There's 900,000 units more than we need to, to comply with the state law. This is 78 acres approximately, but we only have to have 50 covering it. We need to rework this so we meet the law, we get housing where we can to make sense for the community, but we don't go crazy for it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have time constraints, and I believe we'll have to probably, do we vote to close the public hearing? I think we have another zoning amendment to discuss this evening, and I think it is appropriate to move on. Do you wanna continue? Does anybody have any thoughts about making a recommendation this evening? Debbie? Did she pipe up?
Hold on, hold on.
I thought I heard you.
We did. We haven't, we haven't discussed the other two.
No.
Do we have time?
Well, this particular.
Are we out of your time?
We have the accessory dwelling unit, we have the map for this zone, and then we have the accessory dwelling in it. So I. Comments from the board, how do you feel about continuation? Are you, are we gonna close? We can't if somebody moves to do that.
I think we go table on the occasion, we need to close it, but we can discuss it.
Okay. All right. So if anybody has a motion, or any ready to close?
We're gonna close the public, are we?
If you're up. Yeah, we have to close the public.
Are we voting tonight? Are you guys ready?
We need to.
I'll take.
So I'll make a motion, Mr.
Oh, I'm sorry, we don't mean to be all hush-hush. We're just discussing whether or not to close the public hearing right now.
Mr. Chairman, then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor to close the public hearing.
Before we vote, may I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
If we close the public hearing, we're not gonna discuss A, accessory dwelling units or E?
No, Debbie, this is.
Debbie, Debbie, we're still on 3A.
This is just the 3A public hearing, just that particular one.
We haven't.
Yeah, we've already closed the kennels.
She's frozen.
She's frozen.
Okay.
We did. I'm sorry, we're having, we bumped A to the end. We started with kennels, went to zoning amendments, and now we're MBTA community multi-family.
So we closed the kennels one.
So we got two more.
Correct, in the next, however many minutes. So.
Right.
There's a motion and a second on the floor to close the public hearing on 3A. So I guess we're gonna take a vote on that, a roll call.
Okay, just on those three items, and then we're gonna continue so we can discuss these other two next time?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right, roll call vote on the motion to close the public hearing on the 3A zoning. Rob Bamber, aye. Brian Hashi, aye. Joe Sheehan, aye.
Randy Petkowsky, aye.
Debbie Homewood, yes.
All right. As far as a recommendation, does anybody wish to do that, or would we like to reserve it?
I could vote tonight.
Okay.
I don't know about the rest of the board. I could vote tonight.
I'm not ready.
Debbie was not ready.
You're not ready?
No, because I'd like the discussion on the other two items, because I think they're
important.
We're talking about this particular one.
I understand. Go ahead.
This is just the 3A, we still have to get to the last two on the warrant.
So the map and the accessory dwelling unit will be separate public hearings that will be open after the board decides whether to make a recommendation for this public hearing or to continue.
Okay.
Okay. So are there any motions?
Are we voting, are we all ready to vote tonight?
I believe so.
I was the chairman of the task force, I'll make the motion. I make a motion that the planning board recommend, I had, gives a favorable recommendation to town meeting on the 3A bylaw, as written.
Is there a second? Motion and a second, roll call vote.
Any discussion?
Do you have any, do you have any comments, Debbie? Anybody on the board, anybody here present wish to discuss?
Yes.
No, I mean, in the room. Okay, Debbie, the floor is yours. What do you?
So we're making a motion to accept as is what we've only discussed, three of them. But we're okay five of them?
No, we're only okaying, excuse me, we're only taking a vote on whether to suggest to move the 3A district modification. This particular one, we still have two more to go through tonight.
All right.
All right, so there's a motion and a second, and I'm not sure, did Rob make his?
Yep.
Just to restate the motion, the motion is to recommend the 3A bylaw to town meeting favorably.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Rob Bamber, aye.
Brian Hashi, aye. Joe Sheehan, aye.
Randy Petkowsky, aye.
Debbie Homewood, yes.
Okay. The next item on tonight's agenda is yet another proposed amendment to the Norwood zoning bylaw, and this one is, should we deal with the map? Who do you want the accessory?
Do the map.
Do the map, okay.
So they go hand in hand.
Yeah, so this is.
It's hard to discuss one without.
So this is a companion to what we just discussed, but this is a proposed change to the Norwood zoning map, the MBTA multifamily overlay district, MCMOD map.
I have the.
Yeah, Ernie, Mr. Clerk, if you could please read the hearing notice.
In accordance with the requirements of Mass General Law 48, Section 5, notices hereby given that the town of Norwood Planning Board will hold a public hearing on February 12, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, or via remote participation on Google Meet. The purpose of the public hearing is to accept public comments on the draft amendments to the official Norwood zoning map. The proposed amendments will create a new MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District, designed to comply with the requirements of Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 3A, known as the MBTA Communities Act. The new overlay district is proposed to include three sub-districts around the computer rail stations, Windsor Gardens, Norwood Depot, and Norwood Central. The draft zoning map is on file in the Planning Department at the Town Hall and may be reviewed during normal business hours by emailing comd e v at norwoodma.gov, or viewed at the planning board's website, www.norwoodma.gov backslash.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Do you, can you put it up on the screen? All right, so the planning department doesn't have any comments. Does anybody on the board have any questions or concerns about the zoning map?
Just have Sarah explain what is up in the zoning map.
So Sarah, we'll put this on the board so we can all see.
Yeah, so typically for town meeting, there's two articles submitted for any zoning changes to town meeting. One is the text, right, of the bylaw change, and the other one is a companion article that changes the map itself. Those are our two guiding documents when we talk about land use and zoning in town. So we've already, you know, I think, discussed at length the sub-districts. This is just the physical representation of exactly where they are placed, which is hard to see because it's so big and there are so many colors. But this just shows you how it would change. So this red crosshatching right here, that's the Norwood Depot sub-district. The green is the Norwood Central sub-district. And then down here, there is some blue crosshatching in this area, that's Windsor Gardens. So this is how the zoning map would be changed if town meeting approved this article.
So we can open it up to questions from the floor about the zoning map, the actual. Sir.
Yeah, I wrote in 55 Birch Road. So I don't know if it's possible, maybe it could be accompanying the article, or even the task force could do it, but is there any way to, for town meeting voters to have like a list of the addresses that are included? Because I feel like the map itself, I've heard just a few people wanting to zoom in and everyone trying to figure out what properties are included.
Can you pull that up GIS easily now?
Yeah, we can do that. We also have for the yellow sheets that go out, with the warrants to town meeting members, we have like insets where it's kind of zoomed-in versions of the three sub-districts. But that's a good suggestion. We can certainly try to include a list of parcels, perhaps not in the article, because it really is just a map change, but we can include that in the yellow sheets so that town meeting members just have a little bit more detail on what they're voting on.
Or even the existing use, I think, if people know that these are all manufacturing properties, or they have an idea of what's there, it might help them understand why it's being developed.
Thank you. Sir?
I would wonder to ask how this could be passed. Sounds like some of the selectmen don't agree with, with the situation the way it is.
Well, what's, what's happening tonight is this board is making a recommendation to forward it to the Board of Selectmen to include in the warrant. So this isn't the end-all-be-all of it. This is, this is just a step in the process.
Your recommendation is to town meeting?
Excuse me, town meeting, my apologies.
Well, this is what I'm saying. You got selectmen standing up saying they don't agree with this.
Yes, I'm bespoke, yeah.
Solidify what you're putting in town meeting if it's not even agreement with the town.
The selectmen, the town meeting members have the final say, the selectmen do not.
Yep.
Some, some of the selectmen are for it, some are against it. It's, it's the town meeting members. We're making a recommendation to the town meeting members.
All right, so the selectmen should come and speak against it, then, if they...
At town meeting, sure, absolutely.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments about those proposed zoning?
Anybody else can.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Are there any other questions, or can we vote to close the public meeting on the map?
I make a motion to close public hearing.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Rob Bamber, aye.
Brian Hashi, aye.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
Ernie Pachowski, aye.
Debbie Holwood, yes.
Okay, and are there any motions with regards to making a recommendation about the map?
I'll make a motion that we, the Planning Board recommends a favorable vote at town meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second, or Joe seconded.
Rob Bamber, aye.
Brian Hashi, aye.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
Ernie?
Ernie Pachowski, aye.
Debbie Holwood, yes.
Okay, the last item on tonight's agenda, well, the last item with regards to proposed zoning amendments is the accessory dwelling units.
I have the...
The hearing notice, everybody have it?
No, I got it.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, we'll read the hearing notice on the accessory dwelling units.
In accordance with the requirements of Mass General Law Forty-eight, Section Five, notices hereby given that the town in Norwood Planning Board will hold a public hearing on February twelfth, twenty twenty-four, at seven p.m. at the Norwood Senior Center, two seventy-five Prospect Street, or via remote participation on Google Meet. The purpose of the public hearing is to accept public comments on the draft zoning bylaw amendments to Section Three, Table of Use Regulation, subsection J, accessory uses, excuse me, and a new section eight point two, accessory dwelling units. The proposed amendments will provide dimensional and use regulations for accessory dwelling units, which are independent housing units incorporated into a primary, single, or two-family structure. The draft zoning bylaw amendments are on file, the Planning Department at Town Hall may be reviewed during normal business hours via email, comd e v at norwoodma.gov, or viewed at the Planning Board's website, www.norwoodma.gov backslash.
Thank you, Ernie. So before we proceed to the floor, is there anything, Sarah, you wish to offer?
Yeah, sure. So an accessory dwelling unit or an ADU, it's a unit of housing that is accessory to a primary residential home or structure. They're often known as in-law apartments. They're smaller than the main residence, and their use doesn't change the primary use of the property as a single-family home, or the tax assessment of the property as a single-family home. ADUs are very common in Norwood, they have been for a really long time, but despite this, the current bylaw is silent on their use and their design. It's kind of a gray area, so these proposed zoning regulations kind of address the use of ADUs and create some guidelines to make sure that these types of units are compliant with building and fire codes, that they're safe for residents, and that they adhere to some design standards that ensure that they're compatible with the neighborhoods where they're located. The reason why I asked for this to be placed last is in part because a lot of the conversations that we had over the last eighteen months with Norwood residents about housing, you know, people brought these up a lot. This is the type of flexible use of existing dwellings that people really seem to appreciate the flexibility for their own household needs, for their family needs, whether that's, you know, a relative who's aging, who wants to stay close by, or, you know, a college graduate or college student living at home in their own space, or, you know, there's just no shortage of options for people to use these. So by writing this into our zoning bylaw, it kind of creates a pathway for these to be constructed safely and permitted safely, and again, according to some design guidelines that protect the neighborhoods and prevent these types of units from becoming, you know, two families. It preserves that accessory character of the unit.
Thank you. So the board discussed this at length, but I will ask if anybody has any comments. Ernie?
Just real quick, I think it's a good article, and I just want people to know that our zoning enforcement officer, Gary, is, was helpful in writing this, and I think this is something that he wanted as well, because it gives some clarity to things that were very muddy or milky before.
A lot of people are doing sort of their own thing right now.
Exactly. So this kind of gives him a little bit, at least, a blueprint, if you will, of what's allowed and how, how he can enforce these, these things. So I think this is something that, that he also pushed for, and I support it.
Anybody else on the board have any questions or thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, Debbie, sorry.
I, I know you've all heard me say this before, and I, Sarah, I appreciate your going over with me ad nauseam. I'm going to, I'm going to try one more time. I know we're not doing the freestanding, and I know we don't have design standards, and I can hear Phil Riley in my head. I would just like to get something in that says either visual compatibility of accessory, existing property, like you said, we have design standards, but, and, and Sarah, you've said over and over, a lot of the comments were the single-family areas, stressed that it was a concern all around. Visual compatibility is, I know in this case, police, I know we don't have a design standard in our rules, however, I think it helps everybody to make, we want it to be visually compatible with the house that they're adding on to. Is that...
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I thought we talked about that. Yeah, we did discuss it. I'm not sure how much we can legislate design.
I think it just gives us another tool. I understand that we can't say, you can't do a specific thing, but they're going to come to the board, whichever board, for approval, and it would be, visual compatibility is ambiguous, but it's also succinct. It sounds like a contradiction, but... Any feedback from anybody out there?
Do you have any thoughts?
If I can put language to what Debbie's suggesting, for the board to perhaps vet back and forth, I think this would be addressed in a new section. There's a lowercase l, that's the long list of requirements. I would add L, exterior additions containing ADUs must be visually compatible with the existing residential structure.
I love that.
Okay, I don't see... Okay, so any other further comments from the board? We will now open it to the public. Sir?
Well, I appreciate you, thank you very much, Rachel, Rob.
Yes.
Just clarification, is an ADU an attached structure or a detached?
So we spoke at great length as to what it should be, and I believe we have removed the, the idea of a detached structure as being an ADU. So this would be attached to a, to a home.
Thank you.
Or within the existing footprint.
Yes, but it's not going to be a freestanding building in the yard. Any other questions? Mr. Chair?
David Nern, Niantic, please, I just have a couple of questions. I've only looked at this today for the first time. This is by right, ADUs, not so, it's not going to Planning Board or zoning board unless somebody is looking for some sort of relief beyond what the building commissioner is instructed to do.
Yeah.
So, and I think, as Holwood's idea of some sort of visual compatibility being within the building commissioner's requirements is a good idea, so you don't have things that don't really fit in.
Sure.
Another question I had is, is there a limit on, there is a limit of nine hundred square feet, but is there a limit on the number of bedrooms or the number of occupants?
I don't believe so.
Should there be? Or even a term of nine hundred square, I mean, nine hundred feet is not a small, nine hundred square feet is not small.
Yes, Derek.
I think, I think in regards to the building code, the occupancy, that it would be that limit, but that's something more for the...
That's a building, I mean, whether or not...
The building code does address maximum occupancy for residential units in square footage. The thought process here being the interest, the public interest here is maintaining that it appears, maintains the appearance of a single-family home or the existing structure. It doesn't fundamentally change the character of the property from a one-family to a two-family, or a two-family to a three-family, and that what exists within the boundaries of that residential addition really does not have a great public interest necessarily to, to the town. I would also clarify that nine hundred square feet, it's either that or half the gross square footage of the existing structure, whichever is smaller.
Right.
Which is significant for a lot of smaller homes that might be seeking to finish out, you know, a split level, finishing out a basement or something like that.
Sure.
But it's smaller homes, but, I mean, yeah, how would you, how do we measure it? By, you know, somebody say, well, I've got a finished basement, that adds three hundred square feet there. If, an eighteen hundred square foot home is not a large home, it's, it's not a small home either. I've got office space, my old office, it's just under a thousand square feet, and under something or other, and, you know, I look at that, visualize that, and a few, you can put a few bedrooms in there, still have a living room, dining area, kitchen, bathroom or two, and before you know it, you've got four or five people living there, and then now we're talking about, we, we don't want to change the character of the neighborhoods where these might go, but I wonder if the board ought to, you know, would consider a limitation on number of bedrooms, or, not in relations, I know you wrote that out of it, and that, that makes sense, it's nobody's business whether you're related to people or not, but maybe the number of occupants is a reasonable limitation or the number of bedrooms, so that the character, because bedrooms and occupants bring more vehicles and more back and forth. I, I've understood these things to be things that would be relatively unobtrusive in the neighborhood. You're not even allowing the front, the front door.
No front door.
So, you know, you're not even, in many, we wouldn't even know who's in the house, and that's fine, but if all of a sudden four or five people are there, that does change the character of the neighborhood potentially, as well as the additional car, so I wonder if the board might think about that, and I was taken up with other matters, so I didn't think about this one a whole lot until I was reviewing it for the hearing tonight, but I'm sure Ms. Dixon has thought about all of this and probably has an answer for me, whether I like it.
It's a good amount of discussion on this one. Thank you for your thoughts. Any other, any other questions or comments in the back?
My name is Cabalang Janet, I live on Four Castle Avenue. First of all, I've been involved for the past twenty, twenty-two years, we love this stuff, but just answers a gentleman right here, I have a family of six. If I need the extra space, do I tell them, oh, I'm not allowed to live in this dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit? That's not right. I mean, number, nine hundred square feet is just enough if you've got a maximum two-bedroom. Do I tell my kids, no, you're not allowed here, two of you allowed here, and the other not? I don't think what he's requesting makes sense. Plus, I don't believe that will change the criteria of the neighborhood, because we live in that neighborhood anyway. My kids going to college, they're coming back home, they need their own space, so I believe that's very good as like an accessory to the house, so they have their own privacy, they have their own life, save an us going renting somewhere out, or moving out of the town, especially like they grew up with, you know. And like answer to Debbie about the character of the house, well, when you do an addition, you've got to finish the size in the same like your house looks like.
Yeah, you have to.
So it's going to look like you're not changing the character of the house. That's a concept, a good construction, so all that, it has to be followed. The roof's going to look like the same, plus we have to respect the setback of the neighbors and all that stuff, whether you're doing it as a dwelling unit or like you're adding a family, this has to be respected. So it's going to compare with the criteria of the house and the neighborhood, and about the size. I believe we should stick to nine hundred square feet, because it's not much for being a unit, it's very small, and because if a house is like, let's say, fourteen hundred square feet, you allow the dwelling to be seven hundred square feet, two hundred square feet is like a bedroom. I believe we should stick to the nine hundred square feet, not to the smallest of the half side of the house. That will help people even more, especially like we were talking all night long about how housing is expensive, where the kids are growing, where the families are going, and all that stuff. I believe this is going to be a huge plus for families to stay in Norwood and keep their kids around, to help them before they buy their own houses. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Yes.
Due to the lateness of the hour, I'm going to make a motion that we can, we can continue this particular article for the next meeting, and...
Do you want us to...
Yeah.
And possibly, Sarah, possibly, if you could just, in your deliberations or whatever, talk to Gary about some of the concerns, and just feel him out of what he feels appropriate, and I mean, at least we'll get his, he's the enforcement officer, what he feels is appropriate. And so I'm going to make a motion that we continue this public hearing until Monday night.
February twenty-sixth.
February twenty-sixth.
Seven p.m.?
Seven o'clock.
Is there a second?
It won't take long, and we'll maybe get some feedback from Gary.
So motion on the floor.
Rob Bamber, aye.
Brian Hashi, aye.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
Ernie Pachowski, aye.
Debbie Holwood, yes.
Okay.
And we have the...
We have meeting minutes, so the next thing on the agenda is meeting minutes from January second of two thousand twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.